Near future, we are in the process of negotiating with some of the players in that industry, so it was important for us to be there. Key factor in achieving this service that is being offered for the communities is to enable competition, however, the key factor was that competition will not necessarily mean lower prices for cable and telephone services. Also, different ways of using, cities are using their websites. It was interesting to see how some cities are doing mapping for their, the services that they provide, such as sweeping where individuals can access the internet and see, sweeping and trash pickup and see which houses have been picked up, and a number of ways that they're using a website. That was certainly informational for me, as well as succession planning, which was key for me. I also attended budget and audits and meaningful reports for city governments, and they were dealing with how staff had the budget process. Of course, that's not done in the city of Glendale, but important thing for me was, like I said, succession planning and mentoring. It was interesting to see how the last generation, the gap between the last, the baby boomer generation and Gen X, the next generation, where there's going to be a lack of qualified managers that are coming up. And there's approximately 80 million baby boomers leaving the job market in the next 10 years, and about 50 million replacing it, so there's going to be a great lag. And the values and the commitments of the next generation are different. They're not mostly willing to sacrifice their careers, they're not willing to sacrifice their personal lives for their careers, so there's got to be a different approach to retaining and training managers in the future. Just a few tidbits that maybe the city manager might be interested to, is the cost to replace a key employee is 100% to 200% of annual salary. And this briefing was given by the city manager of Palo Alto, a city that I have been kind of watching lately. And it's also important, there is a value shift, it's also important to grow your own managers within your city, and to do that, you need to take, Mr. City Manager, you need to take action. No, but we do need to take action in terms of our staff and our managers. I think we have a great team. However, we do have to plan for succession planning, and that's by continuing training programs that we have. And I know we used to have a number of training programs in the city, and we still do the City University, or whatever it's called, but I know some programs were also cut because of budget cuts a couple of years ago. I would, following the seminar, I would be interested in, just by looking at these numbers, in looking at some of the training, training way, some ways of training our current leadership and our current managers to look at the city for their future careers and not look at elsewhere. So for me, retaining good managers, key people, is key for a better organization for the city. And that's pretty much it. And Mr. Najarian was with me as well.
Yes, I was there in Monterey, as well as Mr. Quintero and you, Mr. Manukian, and we were, we didn't just see each other in the hotel rooms, we were actually up at 8:00 for those early morning meetings. But one very interesting observation, actually a discussion we had, we were all sitting at the table during one of the luncheon presentations, and imagine a room filled with 400 or so mayors and city councilmen from cities throughout the state of California. And this one lady came running over, and we looked at her tag, and she was the mayor of San Carlos. I'm not exactly sure where that is, I think it's in Northern California. And she saw that we were from Glendale, and she approached us and said, "Oh, Glendale, I love your city. It's the most beautiful city that I've ever seen." "Oh, really?" And in my mind, I'm thinking, was it Brand Boulevard that she saw? Was it our Verdugo Mountains? Was it our stately homes in Northwest Glendale? So I asked her flat out. I said, "Well, what exactly, what part of our city did you find so beautiful?" Hold on to your hat, Margaret. She said, "I saw the most beautiful banquet hall and had the best time there, and I'm never going to forget my experience in Glendale because of your banquet hall."
It was a wedding, yes.
And I didn't know what to say, and you popped into my mind, Margaret, and I said, "I've got to, I've got to let you know." So not necessarily reflecting my personal beliefs on the most beautiful face of our city, but to some people who perhaps haven't seen or been exposed to the type of banquet hall that we have in Glendale, it can certainly be a stirring experience. Thank you.
First time I've missed Monterey. This first time I've missed Monterey, but I had a higher calling in Hawaii, so gained a son-in-law.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, let's see.
You have a son-in-law.
They have not, my daughter's not asked for an annulment yet, so I, let's see.
You didn't spend the honeymoon with them, did you?
No, they called, they called us every, every day. They were on Kauai, so they enjoyed it.
Congratulations.
One week old now. Any rate, I'm glad you enjoyed yourself. I always love going up there, there's some very good meaty topics at that conference.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you also, and I think the best part is when you become grandpa. That's the best part. You get to spoil them and then leave, and not have to deal with the consequences of it.
I'm waiting.
I think you're really going to enjoy that. The other thing is, I have a couple of requests. As you know, we have been dealing with some projects in this town that have been approved in the past. Once in a while, we run into some of the developers, they're constantly telling me, gee, I'm not at a plan check, I'm still working on plan check. I had an opportunity to talk to Stuart Tom this morning, and he suggested to me, if we would like to get a report, I need to bring this up during the council meeting and ask Mr. Zern, to ask Mr. Stuart Tom, to give us a list of this big projects, what their status is, where are they in the plan check? Have some of them been plan checked, have some of them not been plan checked? Because I don't know who's telling me what, so I think I can trust Stuart to tell me this straight. So if, Mr. Zern, you could provide that information to us, it'll be very helpful. The second item that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to do is, as you know, over years, we go around and ask for different items to be put on the agenda, and we have been going, and we have this running list. I think that may not be a bad idea for us to put that, that whole list on the agenda and go through it and see whether or not there's some interest on behalf of some of those items, because some of them happen to be pretty old. So if there is no interest in some of those items, maybe those items could be eliminated, so staff's not doing a lot of work on that. And the third item was, during the budget sessions, I had asked for a breakdown of the fire department's overtime. And I was told I will be provided that breakdown, not on DICE, but at least I will get it as a staff report. So I'm still waiting for that. I would like to get a breakdown of the fire department's $5 million overtime, and I just don't want one line. I'd like to know, I don't want to know who got it, just tell me what it was for, break it down, so this way I have a better understanding of how that money is being spent. That's it.
Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I would also like to inform everyone that I will be at Brand Farmers Market this Thursday around 9:30, 10 to about 11:00, 11:30, and I will be at the Montrose Market on Sunday.
And I will skip Dave's Corner tomorrow, as I'm trying to get my sea legs back in L.A. My mind and my body's still in Hawaii, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll give it a rest this week.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, enjoy it.
Still being in Hawaii, yeah.
You're going to have to explain sea legs to the non-mariners in the audience.
Now, the time change affects you, regardless of what you think. Weddings aren't that easy to deal with. Any rate, Mr. Starbird, you want to make a comment on agenda item for tonight, so people don't have to stay if they don't want it on?
Well, it wasn't necessarily my request, I anticipate.
Why not, but?
Yeah. It is, it is, if you, if, what you might do, Mr. Mayor, is bring it up out of order, and I can address it then. It's relative to the Glendale Municipal Code, what was labeled as cleanup items. I had a request from a council member to schedule the matter for a study session, I don't disagree with that. There are some items in there that probably do merit some additional attention. We can certainly go through all of them this evening, or you could schedule the matter for a study session, in which case we could, we could either hold this matter over, take it off calendar. It looked to me like we could do this in a study session on August 15th, so we could return to it fairly quickly.
So you want to read in the record, and then you can say that again?
Or we can just take it off calendar.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you take this off calendar, staff's going to have to renotice it, there's going to be a cost and a timeframe for that. I don't know if we can make the 15th with the proper notice, or you can continue it to a date and time certain without further public notice.
Need to read it in the record, please?
Should.
Please read the hearing at 9B into the record.
9B Hearing Director of Plan Regarding Proposed Ordinance Amending Titles 16 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code Relating to Miscellaneous Cleanups and Revisions, 91 Ordinance for Introduction.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Manukian.
Are there any speakers? I'll move to continue this item to August 15th.
August 15th at 2:30.
At 2:30.
For study session.
I'll second that.
Without further public notice.
Without further public notice. Okay, we don't need a vote on it, do we?
You can do it by unanimous consent, or you can do a roll call vote, your choice.
No objections.
Objection, disorder.
Let's go back to five.
Five is consent items, including minutes, the following a routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Well, I know I'll be abstaining on the 18th on 5A on the minutes, and I'll be pulling 5B and C.
5, 5A and B.
5A, the minutes?
I believe so, we had a card turned in, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, it is 5A, not, oh, I thought that was a C, you changed it. Okay, 5A and 5B are being pulled.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I would move the remaining of the consent calendar.
C and D.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, so C was not pulled?
No.
Okay.
It was A.
I misunderstood.
City Clerk, Dixon, I did notice. Okay, roll call on those two.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Please read 5A into the record.
5A City Clerk, regarding approval of minutes of the joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority, and the joint meeting of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency, held on Tuesday, July 11, 2006, and the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, held on Tuesday, July 18, 2006.
That's one card, Dr. Spiritu. Two minutes.
I think I made a mistake, I wanted to speak on 5B. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, just stay around. Okay, then, is there a motion on 5A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. I will, I mean, with the abstention on the 18th. Okay, I was looking ahead. Okay, read 5B into the record.
5B is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, regarding recent water damage at Maple Park. 5B, one resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing a city manager or his designated to enter a construction contract with Frederick Towers Construction Company.
Good. Dr. Spiritu, two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. I am Dr. Richard Spiritu. Last week, Mrs. Patrick was here and was talking to the City Council about how she uses the congregated meal program. That program is also at Maple Park, and after reviewing the documents, there was two feet of drywall that was removed from everything in the bottom floor because there was 16 inches of water. My question is, now that we're going to remodel the place, and next week there's going to be a total upgrade, what is happening to the people? And I understand that there's approximately 20 Seeger citizens who have their meals served on a daily basis at Maple Park. I just want to know what's happening to these people, because this is going on, and this may take a period of time. Thank you very much.
George Chapman, would you like to answer that?
George Chapman, Director of Parks and Recreation, we are still serving the seniors at this point. We run air conditioners, we're trying our best to keep the services going. That's why we're here with the emergency request, so that we can get the contractor on board and repair all the damage to the facility. So we're trying not to impact the programs as much as possible. The seniors are still there, they're still eating, there's no mold.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian.
George Chapman, I think the issue is in the multipurpose room, it says lifting tiles at the multipurpose room. Do you have another location when the seniors will be fed, when the multipurpose floor is being laid, or are they going to do the work at night?
Well, I don't think they'll be doing the work at night. ARC will be available to the seniors, so we will bring them over to the ARC.
So you, people will show up over there and they will be moved?
Yes.
Or you would give them instructions to go there?
We'll give them instructions to go to ARC while the work is being done.
Okay. By the way, damaged soppy?
Supplies.
It's misplaced. It says, it says damaged soppy and equipment.
Okay, thank you. Head Speaker, Barry Allen?
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait.
We've got to move, right? Oh, he has another speaker, oh, okay.
Barry Allen, two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, and the public, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Thank you very much on item 5B. I was very quite surprised that this is two months from the time that this occurred, and now we're looking at the potential for mold remediation, which is really a problem. But 60 days, now, why did it take from 11:00, when they assumed this happened, till 5:00 in the morning, when, from what I've read, members of the public found this particular problem with water draining out of the door? And then, of course, nobody could be found to be able to unlock the door, so they had to ax it down or force it open. But now, why do we have this damage? There's water in the building, right? Water pipes, bathrooms, everything else, no floor drains? And also, I have another problem with, how are you going to prevent this in the future? Are you going to be putting in public buildings, are you going to put water flow alarms that go to our 24-hour dispatch centers at the fire department, and the police department, and the water department? I think that these things should be looked at, at the same time to prevent and mitigate these sort of circumstances. Now, for this to go 60 days is really a problem with me, that I have seen issues like this, insurance companies are immediately notified, remediation starts right off the bat, not two months later. Now, also, I would assume that we have a couple of park rangers, and at some point, they might, you know, drive by and check each of the parks, or the police department, someone should be checking these. And of course, maybe instead of sleeping for eight hours, the fire department could start checking city facilities like this. It's only our money. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Have no more cards? Is there a motion?
Blue 5B.
Second, and I would like to find out why, why has it taken two months to come to council for approval?
Want to explain about contracting?
George Baltario, Parks and Recreation. Took a lot of time to actually remove all the materials out of there and actually dry it all out, so we had vans going for a long time to try to mitigate the, you know, mold potential. And then, we had to actually remove, per direction, about 18 inches worth of the drywall areas to allow airflow and to make sure that mold did not begin to corrode.
To determine how much repairs need to be done.
Correct, yeah, and go through, secure the pipes and everything else.
And compare plans and specifications.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, the implication is, we did nothing. The reality is, we've spent a great deal of effort and time quickly responding to the incident to mitigate the impact, deal, make sure we didn't later on have mold problems, removing drywall, doing a lot of the, what I'd call the damage response work, and then assessing the nature of the work, so we'd know how to approach contractors to get to bids in order to come in and fix it.
This is also one of the busiest times for the summertime programs at Maple Park, so there's a lot of materials, a lot of kids, and, you know, staff did a really good job at maneuvering around.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a city building and as such, we have insurance for our buildings, so we had to notify the carrier, the carrier has come out and performed an inspection, I believe, as well.
Yes, the carrier.
Along with our risk management and safety section.
Absolutely. And John Hickman from Facilities. And also, the fire department did respond, and if I can respond on the ranger, we don't have rangers that early in the morning or past midnight. You know, the rangers do close the parks and then go home. We just don't have the capacity to do that with four rangers, at this point, with all the parks.
I'm assuming that in the old days, well, I'm not assuming, I know, in the old days they did not require for bathrooms to have floor drains. Recently, it's almost a must.
This is a 50-year-old building.
So I'm assuming as we fix this thing, we will install floor drains for these, so we don't have the problem.
Correct. Right, and what happened with this was, about 10 years ago, contractor came in and on a copper pipe, put a galvanized cap on it, and that's kind of a, right.
Contractor should have known.
And there was, and then they sealed it off of the wall, and, you know, no one knew about it, it burst.
Okay, thank you. And I know when I had water damage in the house, how long it took to get the insurance company out, to approve and give us the right to repair. We didn't need in for a long time. Okay, it's been moved, second, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication, item number six. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Hi, my name is Linda Patrick, and I'm here as one of the tri-chairs of the Glendale Relay for Life. We're here to ask you, first of all, we're here to thank you for your continuing support for our event, and we're here to ask you to proclaim August 15th as Wear Purple for Life Day. Wear Purple for Life Day. And I'm here with Dave Ahern, our Chair of Food, Coco Panassian, our Chair of Registration, Alina Azizian, who will talk more on this, and Paula Devine, our Chair for Ceremonies. So here is Alina.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Alina Azizian, and I am the Chair of the Sponsorship Committee this year for Relay for Life. I want to talk a little bit about Wear Purple for Life Day. We decided to do this to help raise awareness about Relay for Life in the city of Glendale. This is a fantastic event, and I know almost all of you were there last year, many of you stayed overnight, camped out with us, and we had a great time, and we're really hoping to see more of the community out there this year. We encourage all city staffers, business owners, community members, people who work in Glendale, people who are watching this right now, to please wear purple on August 15th. And if people ask you why you're wearing purple, tell them you're wearing purple to raise awareness about Relay for Life, which is a fundraiser for American Cancer Society. I know it's difficult also for you gentlemen in suits to wear purple, but you don't have to come out with the funky 1970s purple suit, but a purple tie, we have purple buttons, purple wristbands. If you could please help us out and raise awareness on that day. And also, if you know of anybody, any businesses who would like to sponsor and become a community partner with us, please let me know. As I said, I'm the sponsorship chair, so just let me know if you know of anybody. I'm going to pass it on to Dave to tell you a little bit more about the event itself.
By the way, I have a funky purple suit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the event, as you may know, is on October 7th and 8th. It's a 24-hour event. It's going to be at the sports complex. We are encouraging members of the community and businesses to form teams, to join a team. You can contact Linda Patrick at 548-3351, or you can go to the website, Glendale Relay for Life. Last year, we raised $115,000. This year, our goal is $200,000. So we anticipate having a great event. As is our tradition, we will have great food at this event. I chair the food committee, the food divas, and myself, so we will be providing quite a menu, and we'll tell you more about that in a later appearance.
Who's next? Thank you very much.
What is, if I may, what is the sponsorship level?
Sponsor chair.
Sponsorship, of course, we take any donations. Sponsorship begins at $500, and that's to get the business name on the participant t-shirts. Last year, we had, I believe, 1,000 participants, hopefully more this year, and it's all the way up to $10,000, which is the presenting sponsor for the event.
Okay.
Lots of.
Yeah, my kids are asking when we're going to go out there, so they're looking forward to it. They had a great time this year, I'll bring a jacket with me, because last year I froze up there. And did I get a GMA sweatshirt? No, you guys didn't give me one, and you left me out in the cold like that.
I believe we gave you two t-shirts.
Oh, okay, yes, yes. So I'm looking forward to it, every year, I think it's a great event, and I commend you for what you're doing. Of course, it's a great cause, and I'm sure that you will raise over $200,000 this year, so let everyone know that there are a number of sponsorship opportunities, and all the businesses in Glendale can certainly participate, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all your support. Bye.
Head Speaker, Mike Nagel.
Good evening, city council members, city staff, and of course, the other, my fellow citizens of Glendale. I'm here to speak concerning the proposed building at 6,200 San Fernando Road. My main objection to the building itself does not have anything to do with its utility or with the usefulness it might have to disabled people in our community. It is its location. It is located in a commercial district, it is the only, it will be the only residence in that commercial district. It is away towards the railroad tracks, a high-noise area, and it's not really accessible to public transportation. We've been assured that the B-line runs past there, but it does not. And the only, the MTA bus that does run by it, runs about once an hour, and it runs up and down San Fernando, it does not go into Glendale, really. Also, they've been applying for a variance to allow a shortage of parking spaces, and they're a third of a mile from the nearest restaurant, they're over a mile from the nearest large grocery store, and they're basically stuck out in the middle of nowhere. Now, we're supposed to have, to help these people, we're supposed to help bring them into the mainstream of our society, they're not supposed to be hidden away in some institution where decent folk don't need to look at them. And this is effectively what we're doing by building in this location. I really think that the city council and the planning board need to think seriously about finding a different location for this project. This project could do a lot of good for disabled people in our community, but putting them out away from the life of the sea, away from being visible in the city, is not the right thing to do. These are not livestock, these are people, and they should be part of our These are people, and they should be part of our community, not hidden away. Thank you very much.
So would you mind putting her address on the card?
Oh, certainly.
I know she didn't do that. Mr. Kusakian, would you have it down? Next Speaker, Dr. Richard Espirito.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Dr. Richard Espirito. Mr. McFaul.
Sir.
I want to thank you very much for getting...
Sir, are you running for him?
Yes, I'm running for power.
Oh, I didn't know there was a PowerPoint. Okay.
I want to thank you for getting these three chairs removed, but would you also inform whoever removed them that they need one more location? Also, Mr. McFaul, would you inform the various boards and commissions on their agendas that there's, some of them are not putting the ADA requirements? Are we ready?
Yeah. Give it just a second. Someone turned off the PowerPoint presentation. There it is.
Give him the five minutes when he starts.
Sorry. I can't.
Okay. My presentation tonight is going back to my favorite subject, the Glendale B-line. I entitled this Mr. Toad's Wild Ride.
What's this?
Oh, this is the executive summary that was done by TMC. This was the contractor. Down at the bottom, you'll see that they have requirements for slip resistance and also that there was a problem with the issue regarding the destination signs on the buses. These are the list from the same company, listing all the number of violations according to ADA. This was done back in December of two thousand and five. This is the number three bus done in front of the Glendale Main Library. If you notice, the destination sign is not working, and they have the number three on an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sign, which TMC had already previously cited. This is also a California Vehicle Code violation. This is the number one line at the corner of Stocker and Central. You can see this destination sign isn't working. Also has another one of these number one signs on the bus. This is slip-resistant surface. This happens to be one of the B-line buses, and you can see there is no, it's very glossy and shiny. This is one of the slip-resistant surfaces on MTA, one of the buses that you are in charge of on the MTA Commission. They have put in some very nice ones. This is the section of the law regarding handrails, and down at the bottom, it talks about the fact that it's needed to get from the time you board the bus and after you board the bus, you can be able to rest while you're paying your fare. This is what happened before I filed a grievance with ADA, and you'll see there's no rails on, this is on one of the buses. This is after the correction. This was taken on July the two thousand and six. This is after the correction. You'll see that there's a little bar over there. This is a MTA bus, picture taken on July the two thousand and six, and you'll see that there's the fare box, which is identically the same to that which we use, which is the Odyssey fare box, and it goes around. Next slide. This is a new flyer. If you notice, all those bars are yellow. This bus is on the two-hundred bus that goes down Alvarado, which is on, very interesting, goes over to St. Vincent's Hospital and all the medical centers. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Kusakian, would you please provide these copies to all the members of the City Council? And this goes to Mr. McFaul. This is a grievance regarding the B-line. Also with that, and this is to Mr. Howard regarding the issue of discrimination in coercion and retaliation. I would like an answer to why the B-line buses, after we had it, I filed a grievance, it was not corrected properly, and now I have to file a second grievance. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Mr. Kusakian, please get this to Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there's a couple of clarifications I'd like to make. Number one, if you'll notice on there, those inspection reports came from December. We've had inspections again in March, and I had inspections done again in July, and we will have inspections done every quarter by this firm, TMC. The issue of the handrails, and I'm not sure, Mr. Espirito didn't clarify buses and which one was a before and after. I have a picture of a bus here where we did retrofit the stanchions. We were, and I think in a report to Mr. Starbird, I indicated that the buses had come to us from the manufacturer lacking a bar. We contacted the manufacturer, they indicated, yes, in fact, that was the case. Our inspection had indicated just that. We had those bars sent to us from the manufacturer, installed, and we actually added a second piece. And I'll have pictures for all of you of that, but if you can see from here, it's pretty hard, we installed a down bar next to the fare box for just that same purpose that was shown. And you also notice that our bar is yellow where it enters the vehicle. The latest July report, which I'll send over to all of you, has indicated a continuing improvement on the part of our contractor in making all of the requirements repairs, whether they be mechanical, ADA-related, or operational. So many of those particular issues that were raised have been addressed or being addressed. The destination signs, for instance, it took us eight weeks to get those. They were malfunctioning. We just decided to replace all of them. So they are all in at this time, and they have been in for about a month. But we had to replace all of those, and it took anywhere from eight to ten weeks. We were getting them in two and three at a time, but those have all been taken care of as well.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
I understand we have some new buses and we have some old buses.
Yes.
The old buses that are smaller, their wheelchair ramps are operated from outside.
Yes, the driver gets out and then puts those down.
And how many of those do we have?
Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Yusefian, the oldest bus we have is a nineteen-eighty-three, which actually predates ADA. Now, how do you know I took that bus out of service? Because like a building, if you are to begin to retrofit it...
And the reason I'm asking this is because I had another gentleman who came, and he didn't come in here privately and with the assistance of a staff person. Had a different issue. He was also on one of those motorized scooters, and he basically said that he's never had any problems with the B-line, especially with the big buses. But every so often, he will wait for number three bus. I don't know if you were contacted on that.
Yes.
And the older ones, because the driver has to get up and walk over and turn it on and operate it, sometimes drivers will just say, there's something wrong with it, and so this way, they don't have to board. And the person said, he's noticed that the same bus comes back later with a different driver, and there's no problem with the machine. It's working. So I think you may want to talk to the drivers to let them know that, you know, it's unfortunate they have to get up and move over because it's an older bus, but nevertheless, they need to do that. Instead of telling people it's not functioning, especially when it's functioning, then the word gets back to us that, gee, your ADA ramps are not working, which, just somebody being lazy.
You're absolutely right. We'll make sure that message gets back. It's been mentioned before, and we will continue to harp on that particular issue.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Katchek on Johnny. Very good. I'm getting there. Not here? Did I say it wrong? Katchek?
Katchik.
Oh, you said it right.
Oh, not right.
Okay. Next speaker is Angela, I guess it's Angela Javorkian?
It's me, Suran Javorkian.
Wrong.
Yeah, it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. The reason we are here, the Grandview Cemetery, which is closed already two months, and our loved ones up there, we can't go and see them. I don't know what to do. We would like to ask you if you can help us.
Okay, Mr. Starbird or Mr. Howard?
This issue, this issue, I discussed it with the City Manager today. It was brought up on the show last night, and I discussed it. I've discussed it with them before, but I've discussed it. There's a number of issues, and I was planning on having the City Attorney and the City Manager get together with the parents and everyone that is involved at one point to see if there's a way that we can resolve it. But I'll let the City Manager make some comments regarding that issue. It's a terrible issue that many, many families are being affected by, and I think it's important for the community to know where we are, what we're doing, and how we can proceed from here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that is probably more than I can get into without having the matter placed on the agenda, and maybe we should do that at some point. But suffice to say in very summary form, the City Attorney's Office and my office have tried to stay very close to this issue, recognizing it's a tremendously difficult one for the families that have loved ones that are interred there, for individuals who have plots there, and frankly, for the neighborhood that surrounds the Grandview Cemetery, because it's an entire city block in the middle of a residential area. But it is a difficult situation that we have a great deal of difficulty being directly involved in and for which we, at least at the moment, do not have a great deal of control. We are monitoring it very closely. City Attorney's Office in particular has been in touch with the State Office of, I think it's called the Cemetery Bureau, which frankly, wants an operator of a private cemetery, and this is a privately owned, for-profit cemetery. Once that individual reaches the stage where these owners have and essentially are not able to continue conducting business because of lack of funds, the state's ultimate action is to require that they cease operation. The state did that. There's actually no resolution process that the state, however, undertakes. And the closing of the gates by the owner, at that point, the state says, that's all we regulate is up to that point. The rest is literally left up to civil courts for the most part. I understand today from City Attorney's Office that a lawsuit has been filed against the owner by five owners of plots in the cemetery, and they are seeking a class-action suit status for that, which implies they're likely contacting or attempting to contact other individuals who either have loved ones there or who have plots there. We will be doing additional follow-up. Mr. Manukian's point is a very good one, and that is that many people look to the city to somehow do something about this situation, and yet, we're at many point, at this point, frankly, as frustrated as many of the individuals who have plots there or loved ones there. But we will be doing additional work to see what alternatives we have for taking some action to try and bring this to some positive conclusion. I will tell you that my office has a meeting with the Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Llewellyn of Forest Lawn Cemeteries, to get their insight and advice on this kind of a situation within the industry. I know Forest Lawn has extended to owners of plots some assistance, if indeed grave locations are necessary to provide that to them, but we're hoping that they might, as a leader in the industry, we're hoping they might be able to help us figure out a course here to help resolve it. We have posted a sign at the cemetery indicating that the cemetery's operations have ceased, and we've left a number for the California Cemetery and Funeral Bureau. That number is nine-one-six-five-seven-four-seven-eight-seven-zero. At this point, we don't have a good answer, however, and I'm not certain if somebody calls this number, they're necessarily going to get a satisfactory answer. That's about all I can provide at this point.
Can we contact our state representatives to, or have they been contacted to do something about this?
No, I can't say that's been done because we don't see a recourse in state law, frankly. And again, we're getting into a level, we should probably bring you back a report on this, but in my discussions with Mr. Howard's staff, and they've done quite a bit of research on the options and alternatives that the city has relative to this matter, there isn't a great deal there. Short of monitoring this from a nuisance and abatement standpoint, the state treats, as I understand it, treats a private, for-profit cemetery like they do virtually any other business in the state, and if parties that have plots there have grievances, about the only recourse the state provides is through civil action, which doesn't seem very satisfactory to residents who either have plots or loved ones there, and it seems terribly egregious to close the gates and prevent loved ones from getting onto the property, but for all intents and purposes, it's private property, and at this point, we haven't seen that we have a standing in that regard.
Can the owner open the gates?
I think the owner certainly can open the gates. They can't, they can't, as I understand it, the state will no longer allow them to operate it as a cemetery.
Right, but the gates can be opened for the families to visit.
But I would think the gates can be open.
Yeah, they're, just to add, without going into great detail, obviously, with the lack of funds and the ability to properly run the cemetery, there are insurance and other liability risks that concern the owner. There are some options, as Mr. Starbird noted, that our office is looking at, over and above the initial research that we've done, to try to see how creative and outside-the-box we can go, to try to provide some level of assistance. There are a couple of ideas we've been batting around, as late as this afternoon, of where we may be able to go, including, but not limited to, possibly seeking state legislation. Nothing that we can find within existing, the existing state legislative framework would provide assistance, but we have some ideas where state legislators might want, our local legislators might want to take a look and carry something to Sacramento.
That'll take months and if...
It will. And one of the options we are looking at is some short-term options that I still have yet to discuss with Mr. Starbird, was based upon a conversation I had with my staff late this afternoon. So we are still looking.
One question, if the family sign a release before they go into the park, would that indemnify the property owner?
I can't speak to that. That would be up to the property owner to determine whether or not that release would be adequate.
I just want to know if there's a way of approaching the property owner, any other way to...
That's actually one of the options my staff and I discussed late this afternoon about, something I haven't discussed with Mr. Starbird yet, about what role we can play to perhaps work with the owner for some limited hours of operation on a part-time basis to allow people to get in. This is a heart-wrenching, heartbreaking situation, and we understand that, and we're very cognizant of that. And I think it's our goal to look as far as we can, as wide as we can, and as deep as we can, within the framework that we have to work within, to see if we can assist in providing a remedy. There are no guarantees that we can, given the position that we're in and the fact that this is a private business, but we'll do what we can, as Mr. Starbird noted.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manukian, I think it would also be helpful if individuals who have loved ones there or who own plots there would give us their name and contact information. One of the discussions I had with a member of Mr. Howard's staff just this afternoon was to look at mechanisms that we might be able to help facilitate, or possibly the current owners of plots could, for example, press to get this matter into a bankruptcy court, where maybe they'd have a forum to express their concerns. Maybe there's opportunities for formation of a cemetery district, for formation of a type of corporation where the residents who own plots there and the family members could essentially reach an agreement to take over this facility. But with it being essentially a for-profit, private corporation, and it's a corporation, but it's held by, I think, two or three individuals, it's literally treated by the state like a business, even though, for all intents and purposes, you know, we culturally view it as having special standing. Legally, it's a business, a for-profit business, and short of convincing the owner that they should take some steps, there isn't a great deal that we can do. I will say, relative to maintenance, although they were quite a bit behind in their utility payments to us, we have discontinued electrical and water services to the residents on the property, but have continued the water and electrical service to balance the cemetery, so that hopefully there'd be security lighting and some maintenance of the grounds could be done. I've also directed Parks and Recreation to provide at least a minimum level of maintenance to the area outside of the wall and around the outside, because, as you know, it interfaces with single-family residents and could become quite unsightly if not. Some level of minor maintenance was provided, so we've tried to do that as well.
About grass drumming, anything like that?
Again, minor maintenance around the outside of the walls, so it doesn't... Again, mi- minor maintenance around the outside of the walls, so it doesn't, we can't get inside, it's not our property, we don't have access. Unless it becomes a level that we can take code enforcement, and we're monitoring the situation very closely, hopefully it won't reach that on the inside. But again, if we can get the names of individuals and contact...
Can you give us your telephone number, so?
I, I put it right here, yeah, my phone number is right here.
Because as you suggested, Mr. Manukian, we may want to, in the near future, essentially hold a meeting and invite individuals who have an interest in this to come down, so we can, as we garner more information, we can share that. I'm also hoping that we'll have some positive prospects with the Forest Lawn Cemetery. They are very responsible, they take, they take the standing in the image of cemeteries throughout the United States as something very serious, so hopefully they'll have some suggestions for us as well.
Okay.
Whoever's here for this issue, they should have their telephone number and their name, so we can contact them.
I'm gonna be asking, as they come up.
Yeah.
You, I mean, do you all want to speak on it, after what you've heard?
Thank you very much, thanks for that.
Do they all want to speak, though?
You want to speak?
Wait up, I have to, wait, 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 what's your name?
My name is Sona Chavchovian, I am resident of Glendale, and my mother is buried there.
Wait, please, 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 wait. Okay, Sonia?
Sona Chavchovian, yeah. My mother is buried there, and we cannot go and see. That lady has sold the graves to so many people, I bought two, and he is not letting us in. Of course, that is private property, but we have bought that one. That is ours, a part of all the graves which we bought, they won't let us go inside. And that is, I want to warn you, this is a hazard of a fire, big fire, fire, to be in Glendale and the surrounding area, because the grass is so high and dry, and there is no sprinklers working. So it's up to you, if you don't help us, at least for the, for, you help Glendale residents and the Glendale not to start a big fire, and you will be in, in a big problem.
Well, that's why we talked about code enforcement. If it's in that condition, then we could go, possibly go in under code enforcement and, and do it, cut the grass.
We'll, we'll follow up on that. We've been watching the facility closely, but indeed, we do have a basis to inspect on-site from a public safety standpoint.
Would you put your phone number on, too?
It's on there.
It's on the back.
And regarding the, going to the Forest Lawn, I've got two graves there, I want to bury near my mother, I do not want to go to Forest Lawn. I bought that two graves, and I want to be buried there. I do not want the help of Forest Lawn.
Okay, thank you very much, we're just going to...
Thank you.
We're just going to them for advice, nothing else. Okay, if I say it right, Yura Arutunian? Yura?
Arutunian.
Arutunian?
He speaks, he speaks Armenian.
Translate, do you?
He's Yura?
Yeah, yeah, me Yura.
Did I say it right, Yura? Or is it Ura?
No, Yura.
Yura? Okay, who's the translator?
He says that he has the same problem, he has his wife and his child buried there.
Does he understand what we've been talking about?
I'm not sure. Haskatsak inchasak, inchasak.
No, it hasn't, obviously.
No, not really, I mean, we can explain that to him later.
Maybe can understand, but can't speak, I don't know.
He said that that place looks like trash. And, yeah, and it doesn't look good for the community.
And he said that he does understand that, you know, his impression is that something will get done, but in the meantime, someone needs to look after those sites, because it is looking very disheveled and rundown.
Okay, and regarding the owner, I just heard about the owner, the owner moved out two days during the weekend. I spoke to the district attorney, and I also spoke to the, Mr. Redman, he's the director of the Consumer Affairs over the cemeteries, she moved out. So I...
Your name for the record?
There's nobody there.
Can you give me your name?
My name is Seda Hambarian.
You didn't have a card in?
No, I didn't have a card, but I was...
Okay, you're translating, you're translating.
Says he wants to hold, like, a one-year memorial ceremony, a lot of people want to hold their loved ones' memorial ceremony, and they can't.
Understood.
Now, even, even though it's a private property...
Yeah, we understand.
Would you, would you leave, would you leave?
He's begging that you, please, you know, city council does something about this issue. Everybody else is begging, it's heartbreaking for all of us. I'm here from Texas, I can't go and visit my grandmother's grave.
Would you leave us your...
My grandchildren can't go.
Can you leave us your contact information as well?
Yes, my mother's...
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council, these individuals approached me before the council meeting, and I have all their telephone numbers, I instructed them to put it on the back of the card, so...
Yeah, I know, sir.
For the sake of not asking them to do it again.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another one, Anahit Saranian?
Question for Mr. Howard. We've certainly gone into homes before to force a cleanup of debris and cleaned up yards.
With a court order, yes.
Is that something that, that you would consider?
It's something, it's certainly something on the menu of options, yes.
I mean, certainly that wouldn't open it up to the public to go and visit their loved ones, but at least for the fire hazard and the emergency, it's exigent circumstances.
That's being monitored, and again, we would not go on private property without a court order, but we have obtained court orders in the past to go onto property and remove whatever we had to remove, and do whatever we need to do to make it safe.
I might note, the owners are represented by council, and I think one thing we can do in the morning is to get with them relative to conducting an inspection, we can ask for their permission, and frankly, to bring to their attention the concerns we're hearing expressed here this evening, and at least see if we can get a forum to talk to somebody about allowing families onto the site, although I suspect that because one of the matters that was the final straw in which I think the state finally required that they cease operations, was they weren't able to pay for the liability insurance, and they're required to have insurance.
I have, I have an option I'd like to talk to the city manager about on that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, tomorrow.
Again, we, we, I want to assure everyone here, we are paying, paying very close attention to this. There isn't a great deal, frankly, we can do now legally, but we are following it very closely, and not just following it, we're trying to find answers and solutions, which frankly is very difficult, given the, the condition and attitude and nature of the owners of the site.
Okay, and this is Anahit?
Yes, Ms. Anahit, she's just the same thing, she's, she has her mother buried there, the one-year anniversary is coming up, and she, she's begging you to do something about it, so you can, she can hold that. I mean, you know how important, you know, for the Armenians are to hold a memorial ceremony, it kind of makes you feel better, and, you know, to hold that, and they're not allowed to do that.
That's good.
My kids are here from Texas, they can't go and visit their great-grandmother's grave, they, my son even contemplated jumping the gate, and he says he doesn't care, whatever, whatever they do to him, he doesn't care.
Okay, what's your name, by the way?
Seda. With my mom, Sona, Sona Chavchovian, I, I live with my mom.
Okay, I just want to get your name in for the record. Okay, does, Anahit want to say anything?
We respond, no, not saying. She's just begging you that you do something to open the gates.
Within, before the year anniversary?
They'll be talking tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, next speaker is, I assume on the same thing, Arvik Karavashian. Did I say that one right?
Yes. Hello, I agree whatever they told, and I understand that you are planning to do something, but it's also against our religion, and it causes lots of negative feelings when we can't visit. Please somehow help all these people to...
Staff will be working it out tomorrow morning.
I have kids at home, and they used to go every week, but it's already two months it closed, and please understand that in our religion is very important...
Thank you.
To be there, weekly occasions, Father's Day, Mother's Day, Valentine's Day, and all of us were asking you to help to solve this problem.
Be working out tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to note again, we're not, we're not starting tomorrow to give this attention, we have been following this...
I know.
Working on this, frankly, since before the gates were closed.
You simply said you were going to speak, be talking tomorrow, so...
Okay, okay, I just want to assure the residents, we've taken this very seriously for quite some time.
There's an additional option I want to share with the city manager tomorrow, in light of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, especially code enforcement.
Well, code enforcement, we've been looking at ever since the gates closed, that's been something Mr. Strangle's paying close attention to.
The grass is high and dry and the water isn't running, that sounds like code enforcement.
Mr. Strangle's paying very close attention to that. This is another option, based upon what I'm hearing today, particularly the needs of these individuals to visit with their loved ones, it's an option that's kind of been percolating since this afternoon, and I want to talk to city manager about it.
Okay. Next speaker, Mordova, Mrs. Mordova, she left? Oh, you're here.
Mordova Gohar is her name? She's, she's been here since, in Glendale, since 94, during that time she had applied for assisted housing, section eight, and she hasn't heard any responses or anything taking place on that. Okay, well, apparently, from what I can understand, she had applied for section eight, and then she had also applied for disability, she was receiving medication for her disability, which she has the paperwork right here, however, are, she received information back from the section eight department saying that, or the department that handles section eight issues, saying that, no, you are not sick, and she's obviously upset over that. She said that her rent is a little over, was a little over $500, it's been raised to over $600 now, and off of $800 a month, how can one live off of that? She's pleading and... She's imploring you for assistance, she says they had given me five points, and they want to change her points back to four points, and that's a point system with the section eight housing. Said that she's waiting to have, you know, surgery on, on her foot, and, you know, doesn't even really care as to what happens with the foot surgery, because she's losing hope that whether the section eight issue is going to be resolved or not. She implores you for help again.
Could you get her address and phone number on here, Arid? Thank her, would you?
Thank you, merci.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll ask section eight to again review her case, it sounds like they have been in touch with her, have looked at her information. As you know, there are literally thousands of people who are on the waiting list for section eight, for a very limited number of vouchers, for which we only have in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 ones turnover each year. But again, I'll ask staff to again review her situation and reconfirm the reasons for her as to why her disability hasn't been accepted for the section eight rating, if indeed that's the case.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nancy Kent.
My name is Nancy Kent, I'm a resident of Glendale in the Maple Park neighborhood, and there was...
Thank you very much.
There was an article in the Glendale News Press a few days ago about some residents in La Crescenta who buy their electrical power from Edison, and it mentioned the lengthy power outages that they had during the heat wave, and gave details on how to put in a claim for the food that spoiled, and I would like to thank this council for keeping our power running and spending the money that needs to be spent on the infrastructure so that it works, at least in my neighborhood, knock on wood. And I believe several years ago, when this, when the city council voted on the deregulation issue, Mayor Weaver and Councilman Manukian were on the council then, and the decision was to wait a year for deregulation, and it was during that year that it became extremely obvious that it is beneficial to have a public power company. So, thank you for keeping the lights on, and I would also like to thank you for the good water quality that we have, I have heard that the water that comes out of our taps is monitored more stringently than bottled water, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Speaker, Mr. Yusefian?
I don't know, I'm pretty sure you weren't hearing why and why, but my understanding is that Edison has asked for yet another rate increase.
Wouldn't be surprising, wouldn't be surprising. Next speaker, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, I'm Barry Allen of Vanguard. I just want to briefly touch on the Grandview Cemetery situation. Vanguard has had numerous phone calls from people all over the area and some outside of the area, and we have referred those calls to one of the two law firms that are handling the class-action suits. We've also heard from people who have talked with management at Forest Lawn, and they have given them the rates regarding internment and exhumation and re-interment, and those are rather costly rates. But enough for that. One of the issues, Mr. Mayor, that was discussed last week when it was brought to the council's attention, and the mayor, Protem Yusefian, was that there are some ethics code violations with regard the city council, specifically one member, and the Miss Asia pageant, to wit, the Form 700 that has been turned in by Mr. Weaver does not include any relationship to Miss Asia or to the Dreaming of Roses. However, according to the city biography, when Mr. Weaver was appointed mayor by the four other council members, he indicated on that that he was on the executive committee of the Miss Asia pageant, and actually, the Virgilia Productions, and a conversation with Virgilia Viegos indicated that he has an additional interest in the Miss Asia contest. Now, from public documents that we have obtained, indicating that one of the firms that this city bought property from back in November and December, and the money took place on exchange of money in January, shortly thereafter, about $12,500 was contributed by that company to the Alex Theater for the Miss Asia pageant. Further, the city library, Nancy Hunt Coffey, director, provided the auditorium at the central library to, and upon request of Mr. Weaver, without any charge, and she said, I do that for a city official for city events, and she took the mea culpa based on the fact that... And she took the mea culpa based on the fact that she didn't ask if the Miss Asia pageant was a for-profit, was located in Glendale, but that was $2,500 that the library was cheated out of. Then, of course, the note to Chief Randy Adams, signed by Dave Weaver, requesting reserve officers and equipment. And seven officers were provided and six police cars were provided at no cost to the Miss Asia pageant or to Virgilia Productions. And there's more, and we'll be talking about that. As a matter of fact, Vanguard will be hosting a press conference regarding all the documents relative to the allegations of the conflict of interest and code of ethics violations because it's apparent that the council, the remaining council, is not interested at all in pursuing this with sanctions and censure. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard, looking for accountability from our elected officials. Thank you.
Next speaker, Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, and the viewers. Just remember, if you are anywhere, by any chance, a neighbor of any of the barbecues that are being operated illegally according to the city law, then you call the AQMD 1-800-CUTSMOG. You know, banquets with outside barbecues do not just cause problems for people with breathing, but they also cause anger and disruption in the neighbors' lives in other ways. For instance, noise late at night causing nearby neighbors to lose sleep. Have to get up to go to work in the morning, but they lose sleep. Police arriving late to quell the arguments, of course, cause further noise pollution. The parking for the banquet halls, the cars all over the adjacent streets cause disruption in nearby neighbors' social lives and family lives. Cigarette smoke and butts cause further pollution in the neighborhood. Also, in one particular case up in Montrose, pollution from rotting food, et cetera, left in the trash bins for two weeks, and I have pictures of it. The bin overflowing, and the only fact, the fact is that the lady, I spoke with her, and Sharon, and she called the bins, the operator of the bins, and said, "When are you going to pick it up?" They came and picked it up, and when they dumped it, they left all over the lane, trash all over the lane. So she called them back. She went in and spoke to the banquet hall or the restaurant owner, and he said, "I'll take care of it right away," and it was taken care of. You know, the total disregard of others', their neighbors', and citizens' rights, is really not very kind. With all the problems with the parking, the smell, the traffic, the noise, it's really a hazard to live near one of these banquet halls. And, you know, it's not to mention the cost for policing and fire calls to these banquet halls, and they do have numerous calls that they have to report, return to the place over and over again, some of these places. And Mr. Najarian, I appreciate you thinking of me while off enjoying yourself up in Monterey. I hope your wife doesn't mind the fact that you were thinking of me while you were away. But anyway...
You got me, Margaret. You got me, Anna.
Now, if that lady who gave such a glowing account of the banquet hall had to live next door, be a neighbor to one of these banquet halls, I don't think she would give such a glowing account. But, and I know Darlene won't mind, she's a friend of mine, and that's, she knows I'm kidding. Okay, and thank you very much for your attention, and I appreciate your listening to me over and over about my beefs. Thank you.
Welcome. James Osborne.
Hi, Mr. Weaver and the city council. Tonight, I wish to talk about railroad safety and this city council's actions on being proactive about safety. When I spoke here last February, you guys gave me a nice reception about talking about being proactive about safety. I spoke about how Glendale is proactive about safety and they do much about safety. Tonight, I wish to talk about revisiting this issue and see what has been done since then. I read in the paper that Glendale conducted a safety campaign along with the city of Los Angeles, particularly at railroad crossings, to see what violations were happening, and of course Burbank declined to participate. Also, at the... Excuse me. At the last meeting, Aaron Njerian stated that you asked the public works director, and I'll quote you, "You asked to give a report that the state-of-the-art, up-to-date safety measures, which are employed throughout the world with various safety designs, such as hardware, warning bells and whistles that are used at our crossings." And I wonder what has been done since then. And then, moving on, excuse me. Have you, any of you ever been at a railroad crossing, noticed you missed something because you don't see a light? It's very easy to do. What I'm asking is that at the crossings that are in Glendale, particularly the new Flower Steep Crossing, have extra signs that are more than just what are required by the Federal Railroad Administration. They might require one set of flashing lights at a certain height. Perhaps you could have more than one. They may require one sign at a certain distance, and an additional sign won't cost very much. As an example, this sign cost me $30. I bought it at a hobby shop in Florida. It cost me $30. Now, the proper size actually is a little bit larger and costs $80, but it wouldn't fit in my carry-on suitcase. But, you know, they seem like a small thing, but if Burbank had had one at Buena Vista, my mother may still be alive because she would have known. And the reason why I'm saying that is it doesn't take much to go beyond the minimal requirements that the Federal Railroad Administration has. And this council has, and the city has done that in other areas. For example, on Verdugo Road, the minimum requirement is 35 miles an hour for the speed limit. Yet the city decided to make the speed limit 20 miles an hour when children are present in case something happens. They don't want to have that happen. So they lowered it to 20 miles an hour and put flashing lights up in case children are there. Now, they'd be legally within their rights if a car went by 35 miles an hour and hit a child, and they'd be okay, but they decided to go beyond that. And I'm asking that this council do a similar thing at their railroad crossings in the city of Glendale and try to be a model for other municipalities, and at least just do the right thing to prevent tragedies before they happen. And I'm not talking about expensive things, cheap signs like this and lights that cost $1,000, not things that cost $20,000 or $30,000, just inexpensive things to make people aware. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can assure Mr. Osborne that any measures, if that railroad crossing actually happens, any measures that we can take, we will take to make that crossing as safe as possible. And that's if that crossing happens, just so I mention that. As far as, of course, my sole opinion, not the rest of the council.
Mr. Najarian.
Thanks for coming out again, Mr. Osborne. I can assure you that my words back in February were not just idle promises. And I can honestly say that there isn't a week that goes by that I am not discussing railroad safety, both with the city manager and the public works director, as well as in my new position on the MTA, which has given me a broader outlook in terms of dealing with MetroLink. And I actually, one of my staff on the MTA did travel to New York for the rail conference there and came back with the absolute, as I promised, to obtain the absolute latest in crossing safety. So it is, I think I'm speaking for the council that we want all our crossings in Glendale to be the absolute safest possible. And if we've got some crossings that perhaps should be closed and divert to other, more safer crossings, I think that's something that we're not afraid of looking into as well. So, we are working on it. We are making headway. And I think very shortly, we'll be seeing the fruit of some of our efforts, and the improvements will be, will make your sign there really pale in comparison. There's really some high-tech safety measures out there available that we intend to look at and hopefully implement.
Thank you. Next speaker, Vanessa Milano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Vanessa Milano. I'm a Glendale resident. I'd like to speak about term limits. Greed and power in the hands of elected officials have been our burden for thousands of years. Just looking at the way we face problems today, we could be living in Rome in 76 B.C. instead of Glendale of 2006. The struggle that Roman citizens faced 2,000 years ago and the ones we face today are of politics and the desire for unrestrained power. Have you ever heard of a despot that wasn't rich? Remember Papa Doc de Valier and Baby Doc? They were the despots who ruled one of the poorest countries in the hemisphere, Haiti. Remember Ferdinand Marcos and his wife Imelda? They ruled the Philippines and accumulated wealth in the billions, while millions of their subjects faced hunger, sickness, and early death. But history has always given us from time to time men of immense merit who tried to enlighten our lives and guide us in a new direction. Buddha, Jesus, Mahatma Gandhi. The common thread among these men was humility and empathy. They never enriched themselves nor thought to hold ultimate power over others. Their power of persuasion was centered in their uncommon spirituality and clarity of their message. As I see it, the purpose of our lives is to give life. The most joyous experiences of our lives are linked to that goal. Is there a more overwhelming feeling of joy than the birth of your child? Are you not overjoyed when he takes his first step or learns to read his first words? We are given a limited time to bring life into this world and nurture it. We don't get to overstay our welcome. The beauty of life's design is in its fragile framework. Now try convincing a local politician of that concept. He and his friends behave as if they'll never die, and city money is a fountain for their self-centered disposition. While the overriding concept of the great men of history was to serve others, the concept of petty politicians is to help themselves. They scoff at the idea that we should live our lives as if death was a constant companion. They'll laugh if you suggest that the concept of being in office is to serve and improve the lives of others. As in life, they should be given a limited time to bring their goals to fruition, hence the moral imperative of term limits. Listen to the torturous logic of politicians when we talk to them about term limits. Our own city councilmen and school board members think that three or four terms in office should be the norm. If we let them, they'll believe that once elected, they'll be selected for life. There is little humility. Think that in a city with 200,000 people, they think that in a city with 200,000 people, they have a unique capacity rule. Some never realized that their role was to lead and to... They claim that they need many years to become sufficiently capable to make wise decisions. If they truly need many years to become competent, are we then not faced with several years of incompetence from them as they learn their roles? If competence is required, should we not have a college degree in governance from which we should select the best qualified? Should we not ask for a certification in empathy while we're at it? We are a nation in need of true spiritual guidance, and we live in a city with government in need of a moral compass. We can no longer elect our city leaders from the lies on a postcard and the misrepresentation of facts. We can no longer afford to have the most greedy elements of our society fund their preferred candidate. We must strive for campaign finance reform and term limits. If we can't legislate empathy, maybe we can limit access to power to those who lack that essential element. If we don't, we can dread another 2,000 years of this so-called democracy. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last. Speaker on all communications, all communications is closed. What is next, please?
At 7:00 is adoption of ordinances. At 7:00 A. is ordinance amending the municipal code to provide for a refund of planning application fees for zone change under specific circumstances, offered on July 25, '06 by Councilmember Menuchyan.
Mr. Speaker? Want to make the motion or hear the...
Oh, you've missed out last week and all that. Anyway.
Yes, yes. I was in paradise compared to this. You want to speak before the motion?
Actually, before there's any, before there's any deliberation.
Oh, you're leaving the room. That's right, you're leaving the room.
As I...
Bye.
Well, no, I've got to state a few facts. As I stated last week and before that... I forgot which one this was now.
This is 7:00.
Ordinance 7:00 A.
Okay.
You've got two on here.
The problem with my participation in this matter is I have a conflict of interest. And the conflict of interest is based on the fact that I did receive income from the applicants in this, Aminas and Dalida Karovlian, in the form of rent paid on office space in a building in which I was a part-owner. The amount that was paid and that I did receive was above the minimum threshold, and the last date of receiving this income was December of 2005. Therefore, after conferring with the city attorney legally and ethically on my own decision, it is only appropriate that I recuse myself from this matter and retire to the chambers in the back. And please give me a buzz when we resolve the matter.
And, Mr. Mayor, just so the record is clarified, while this is a piece of legislation of general application in the form of an ordinance to, that will affect any individual under the similar circumstances, the trigger for this, as requested by council, was the case where we had the series of unusual events which led to this, and hence the need for Councilman Najarian to continue to recuse himself.
Okay. Ordinaries just be moved and adopted. I do have four cards. Go ahead, listen to the public first. Your speaker, two minutes. Barry Allen.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. I sat through the testimony relative to the continuance of the hearing to another date in December. I think that there are some issues that need to be considered relative to this particular ordinance. One is that the appeals, it should be noted that the monies that have been provided to the city for a hearing and for the EIR and the other required amounts of money for services to be rendered should be held until all of the appeal periods have been exhausted. I think that's one particular issue. And I think as Councilmember Menuchyan pointed out that Mr. Najarian would no longer have to recuse himself after December, so certainly this issue could be taken up at a later date. And so, certainly, the end game is these folks want to rezone that property. Now, if that's the real issue, then yes, they should be entitled to their hearing and with all of those present able to vote. So, they have a hearing, therefore, you wouldn't need to have this particular ordinance at this point to be issued for one particular person who has had one particular claim. But if you do, change the language so that it says until all appeals are exhausted. And then, once the appeal periods are exhausted, then return the money, but not pay. before. I'm Barry Allen, Vanguard Accountability.
Next speaker is Rita Kocowski.
Mayor Weaver, council members, I'm Rita Kocowski. I live next door to 702 East Glen Oaks. My concern about this is the fact that it was an application, and no one's applications are guaranteed that they will be honored. And by having someone change the city charter, once you find out that there is a 20% protest, what is to keep a council member from all of a sudden deciding, oh, well, this may not happen, so I need to recuse myself? I just feel very uncomfortable about that. This particular property was purchased in, with the intention of it being a business. They stated that at the city planning meetings, which they had two of, so they were heard. And they went ahead, ran their business, and then applied for the zoning change. All of this has been done backwards. I feel that refunding any monies to these people is rewarding them, not penalizing them. And instead of giving them their money back, you guys should be penalizing them. They're still running a business. Nothing has changed there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nancy Kent.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale. And I do think that it is fair to give a refund of the application fee because in this case, well, the case that's generating this ordinance, it's not that they lost the case, it's that it was numerically impossible for them to get the votes they needed to get this. And I read the ordinance, and it is worded narrowly enough that it would only apply when this particular situation happens. I would like to express my concern, however, that on the evening when this case came before the council, whenever it was brought up that the applicants would need to follow the zoning laws because they didn't get the zone change, there was an audible, very audible "no" expressed from the area where the applicant was sitting. So that I was sitting in the front of the room, and I discussed it with somebody sitting in the back row. We both heard the same thing. So it seems like they are very troubled by the concept of following the zoning laws. It's unfortunate that there's been so much animosity about this in that neighborhood, and I hope that can somehow get resolved. And the good news is, is that this, the people in this, applying for this zone change, did not decide to open a toxic waste dump for the business there. Thank you.
Next speaker, Susan Roberts.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, staff. My name is Susan Roberts, and I do not believe that you should adopt this ordinance because it subverts the current municipal codes regarding refunds, specifically in chapter 4.08.020 C and C1. The conditions for a refund, excuse me, require that the applicant not run the business or provide the services that they are applying for, for the zone change. And also, the, it states that if there were, if there were, I'm sorry, if there were examinations, inspections, and similar work done, then the refund would be reduced. And there was lots of examinations and inspections and work done by the planning and the legal staff. It seems to me we're creating a specific ordinance for one particular person who did the wrong thing. This was not the planning commission or the planning director's fault for, this person bought this R1, single-family home specifically to turn into a business. And to have him get his refund back is not in keeping with our current municipal codes. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I spoke on this last week, and voicing my opposition, I think it's commendable that you're thinking of a resident getting their money back, and if deserving, there would be no discussion. In the case, I was at the first planning department hearing, and the applicant presented that they were opening an architectural office. Never said anything about contracting. They were denied then. They were denied at the next hearing, at which I happened to be, not particularly for that, this reason, but I was there for another reason. And again, I still feel that the law is there, the ordinances are there, protecting the rights of people regarding zoning. And if you get one person who is determined that they are going to break that rule by opening a business when they knew when they bought the property, it was R1R, and they knew they had to move out of the business, the rental property where they were, that they just went ahead and did what they wanted to do, irregardless of what the laws of the city are. I don't think that's right. The laws are made for everybody to obey, and not just for one or two to disobey. So therefore, I feel that it's in keeping that it be applied, the rules be applied evenly. And I'm sure that you feel the same way. There shouldn't be any bias, there shouldn't be any reason why the rules cannot be applied that the city have enforced. Thank you very much.
Mr. Menuchyan.
Mr. Howard, if they, is there an appeal period? There was no, the issue was there was no hearing. These people paid to have a hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an item, a zone change application does not have an appeal. It goes to the planning commission for recommendation and comes to the city council for either approval or rejection. In this particular case, this matter was denied without a hearing because we could not muster the minimum number of individuals to vote because of the 20% protest, a very unusual circumstance, I think, as we described and mentioned on a couple of occasions, not the least of which was the night of the hearing.
And if they apply again, they would have to pay.
If they apply again, they would have to pay. In fact, this ordinance specifically provides for, for that eventuality, depending on whether or not they decide to take the fact that there was no hearing to court. And if they were to win, they would still have to pay if they want to move forward.
Okay, was an ordinance introduced?
It was introduced last week.
To you second.
So, Mayor, a question from the city attorney. If a different scenario, a different person comes up, and let's say I have to recuse myself, and the same scenario happens again, would you need to pass another ordinance, or this one would handle that?
Again, if it's the same circumstances, the same exact circumstance, just somebody else recusing themselves because of a conflict that they have to announce publicly, as the ordinance provides, the answer is no, you would not need another ordinance. As I indicated before, this is an ordinance of general application to the very specific narrow scenario.
I'm giving a scenario, historic district, historic district is filed, 20% is done. It happened to be in an area, let's say, that I have a financial conflict of interest, not that I have any, but let's say I have one, just for sake of argument. And I said, you know, I have a conflict of interest, I can't vote, and you need five votes. And now, in this case, he, Mr. Njerian, chose not to vote, even though it's required by law. But let's say I, I said, you know, even though it's required by law to vote, I decided that I don't want to vote. Then would that, the people who filed for the district and went through all the hoop law, would they get their money back also?
If the scenario was the same, the answer is yes, regardless of historic district or not. In the staff report last week, it, we did note that, under the fiscal impacts that we anticipate, because of the rare, the rare nature and the narrow nature of this, that it may happen on more than one occasion. And historic districting was something I did discuss with the planning director, that we anticipate there may be one or two applications over the next couple of years for historic districting. And yes, that scenario would be covered.
I have never seen this happen as long as I lived in this city.
Neither have I.
It's the first one. Chances of something like this happening is like that train wreck. Everything coming together, yeah. You know, the chances are so rare, it's just amazing how rare it is.
More rare than...
Yeah, so...
We concur that it is, certainly it was a rare occasion, and there is a, again, remote possibility that it could occur again. But under the scenario you expressed, this ordinance would apply.
Thank you, Mr. Menuchyan.
With that, I'll move 7A.
Second.
Let's move him second. No further discussion. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What is next, please?
Next is action items, and at 8A is Director of Administrative Services.
Oh, let him stay out there.
Regarding amendment to utility users' tax ordinance due to federal actions. At 8A1, urgency ordinance for introduction amending city's utilities, utility users' tax.
You have cards? Yeah, you want to make the motion first?
Yeah, move...
It should be an introduction, so you'd want to hear from the speakers first.
Okay. It's an introduction, it's an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong line. Okay, speakers first, two minutes. Barry Allen.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, should you desire a staff report, Lucy Varpetti and Senior Assistant City Attorney, who handles this and other related matters, is here to provide you with background information, should you desire it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. In reviewing the documentation on this particular item, on the utility users' tax, I would question as to whether or not Charter Cable is included in the utility users' tax. I do believe it is. If that is the case, I would suggest that when this comes to a vote, that Mayor Weaver recuse himself from the vote, as Charter Cable was one of the participants and sponsors in the Miss Asia contest for Dillia Productions, upon whose executive committee Mayor Weaver sits. Thank you, I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Mr. Howard, do I have a conflict?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Mayor, I don't have enough facts to determine that.
Thank you.
This is the first, this is the second time, I should say, that I've heard that you're on an executive committee. I don't know the structure of Virgilia Productions. I don't know what your relationship is. I cannot opine on it.
Nothing to do with Charter Communications?
I cannot opine on it. I just don't have enough facts.
Thank you. Okay, does somebody want to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
Okay, thank you. What's next, please?
At 8B is Director of Public Works regarding installation of radar speed display on East Chevy Chase Drive, South Adams Street, and East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Motion awarding contract to CSI Electrical Contractors, Inc., and rejecting all other bids.
Need a session or just one motion? Mr. Menuchyan?
Well, did this, did this come to city council before, today?
Yes, I complained.
Yeah, well, I'm, it seems like most of these are being placed on Chevy Chase. We've got two, four, six of them.
I said about Glen Oaks before, but the thing you got to realize, one is facing up and one's facing down.
I know, I know, but I understand the first part of Glen Oaks, first part of Chevy Chase, the straightaway, where everyone kind of speeds would be informative. But the rest of where they have them, people really can't go that fast anyway. They're going between 15 to 30 mile an hour throughout all of Chevy Chase, so I don't see the need for the additional four on top. I can understand the ones by right, right east of the freeway, the straightaway, but the rest, I just, I just don't think it's, it's proper for us to place those, those things there.
Oh, yes, Mr. Bagdanian?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if, oh, Mr. Quintero. I feel the same way. I think it's overkill at the upper end of the canyon. And the candidate that I would propose is Canyatta Boulevard, or Verdugo Boulevard.
Or Glen Oaks.
North of the, well, north of the college, so I mean, that's a total freeway. So, I mean, I'd rather have those four transferred to Canyatta Boulevard.
I brought this up the last time, and it came back exactly the same after staff revisited it again.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me clarify that. There was a question about it, and what I indicated was it was out to bid already. We'd bring it back to you before you awarded. We could go through the whole scenario of whether or not this was the layout you preferred, or whether there were some options for us to change. Now, there is some, some peculiarities when you put these onto streets with multiple lanes and what their effectiveness is. But what I did tonight is, we have Mr. Bagdanian here from Traffic and Transportation, who can go through the layout from an engineering perspective. Lieutenant Pulvalitis from the supervisor of the Traffic Bureau is here from the Police Department to give you his perspective on issues such as speed, speed at different areas in the canyon, and his, his opinion on what effectiveness these, these signs may have. I think that'd be the best way for you to get a clear overview of what we're proposing.
Well, Mrs. Terburt.
Well, to clarify the context in which this is coming back to you, the council had previously approved the specifications and locations for going out to bid. Subsequently, Mr. Mayor, you raised the question of why there were so many of these being placed in the canyons. We indicated at that time we'd need to place the matter back on the agenda and would bring it back at the time that we had the, the bids to review with you, and the rationale for why they were placed where they were. Certainly, the council can change that, but since we had a council approval originally for the specifications, we needed to bring this back and see if indeed that's the direction you want to continue to give us, or whether you want to change the direction relative to location. Now would be the appropriate time for that. I would suggest we allow Mr. Bagdanian to give you an overview of how it was these locations were selected.
Over the rest of the city.
Right, that's why we put it on an action item for the discussion.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the selection of Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks Canyon for installation of these radar speed signs are based on our ongoing problems that we have speeding in the canyon. The canyon, both Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks Canyon, as you know, the width of the lanes, there's one lane in each direction, you have parking on both sides, we have many driveways, and you have continuously, you have curves around, and we have done numerous radar speed surveys. Although the speeds are, the speed is posted at 30 miles per hour, we're still getting 85th percentile speeds that are higher than 35, 36, 37 miles an hour. Given the curvature of the streets, given the number of driveways, given the number of blind corners, we felt that if you were to compare that, those two streets to a Canyatta, which has 12-foot lanes, it has three or four lanes in each direction, it has, it's a straight, direct, you know, the lanes are all straight, direct, there is no curves in the lane, or Glen Oaks Boulevard with a raised median, although we do know that Glen Oaks Boulevard, we're also getting speeds over 45, 50 miles an hour. These signs are more effective when you're dealing with one lane, maybe two lanes in each direction. When you're going over to a streets with three or four lanes, or three lanes in each direction, they're become less effective. And those streets already have speed limits in the range of 35, 40 miles per hour that is set. So we feel as far as safety is concerned, the Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks, it's a continuous speeding problem throughout the entire length of both of these streets. Police Department cannot continuously enforce them. So this is basically, the reason it was selected was a traffic calming measure because of the volume of the traffic and the speeds. We cannot put in speed bumps or bumps on the street. We already have the edge lines. Even with the edge lines, we're getting speeds in the 35 and 35, 36, 37 miles an hour. We looked at it, and that the, these signs are effective in about one mile increments or less. So that's why between the signs we have putting the radar speed display boards, it's about .7, .8 miles. For Chevy Chase, the length of Chevy Chase is about 2.5 miles an hour, so it turns out to be about .7 miles per sign. So that was really the reason, the logic behind it. Not that the Canyatta and Glen Oaks, or any of our other major arterials, don't need additional warning signs, because we do have continuous speeding on all of these streets, because the cars are faster, they're higher performance, and people will feel more comfortable to speed, and we cannot continuously enforce that. So that was really the logic and the reasons between, behind Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks.
Yeah, something I didn't think about before, I think, I want to clarify what you said. If you have multiple lanes, and that equipment is reading, you don't know which...
Exactly.
Right.
Lane, one lane, then you know specifically.
Because we can only aim the sign... Because we can only aim the sign and toward one lane, the radar gun that is pointed to that lane.
You're going twenty miles an hour, the other goes sixty, and it's registered, and you're going sixty.
And you can only align it so it captures one lane, and it's more effective in that type of a street setup versus a larger. In the larger street, or wider streets, you may end up putting one on either side, and then try to aim it, hopefully you can get, aim it directly to the center of that lane so that you can capture the speed. That's, otherwise you will have not going to read the speed that you're actually driving.
As a, as a single lane, Mr. Mayor, it's you and you alone, it crossed that, and you tend to pay attention.
I could be going twenty, and I have the thing saying I'm doing sixty.
But on the two-lane roads, it does work, if you do it to the center of the two lanes, that would...
Well, we tried in two-lane road, you tried to capture the faster lane.
Just one lane, right.
In the one lane, with one lane in it, we point, we have two signs, one for each direction, if it's a two-lane road, the accuracy is, if there are two vehicles approaching, you will probably not have a good reading. If it's a single lane approach, then you will have an accurate reading.
Well, uh, these are, these are, these signs don't really have to be that accurate, I mean, it's, it's basically a warning sign, and I still, I understand your logic, and with all due respect to Mr. Bagdanian, I, I do believe that the upper areas of Chevy Chase, it's really not going to serve its purp- purpose, because of the curvatures of the road, and it could even cause some people to veer away from the road by, by getting surprised by those, by those signs, I just, like I said, I'm, in the beginning of Chevy Chase, I understand, because I've, I've even had people pass me on that straightaway, when I was going approximately thirty-five, forty, and they, they passed me, and I understand that area, it certainly needs it, but in the upper areas, I just, and I drive it every day, I live up there, I just, I just don't think it will be, it will be useful, I prefer to have it on another street, Canyatta, you can gauge it where it will capture only one lane, the closer lane, or the, or the middle, middle lane, but I think it'll serve a better purpose on Canyatta, because it's, it's downhill, and, and people, a number of people speed over there, so, or just do away with the, with the four, or just do away with them.
Mr. Najarian?
Um, you know, my thoughts on the, on this issue are, the, the purpose for these signs are to reduce speeding ultimately, by showing someone their speed, and having them say, oh my gosh, I'm going faster than I should be going. Someone who's intent on speeding through Chevy Chase knows they're speeding, I mean, those are tight turns, their wheels are going to be squealing, their suspension is going to be leaning, they're going to be hugging that line, and there's no question in their mind that they're speeding, they want to speed. A flashing sign indicating they're going forty in the twenty-five zone or the thirty zone, isn't going to deter them. I think the best use of these signs are for that driver, the best deterrents are for those drivers that aren't realizing, due to the roadway conditions, whether it's a downhill or a straightaway, that their speed is, is encroaching and, and running away with them getting above, getting above the speed limit. I see on Chevy Chase, a notorious speed zone, that those signs may be viewed as a challenge, you know, at the drag strips, you cross that, that quarter-mile line, and there's your speed, it flashes. In some cases, I think this might actually encourage speeding. For those who are really intent on speeding, why go to, you know, Irwindale Raceway, Pomona Drag Strip, we can get our time right here, how fast did you, did you hit the, the speed zone at Buckingham and Chevy Chase? Well, I hit forty or whatever. So due to our limited res, I'm not saying these are bad, but due to our limited resources, I think the best use of these signs are in those areas and streets where it's, you know, the soccer moms, or the businessmen, or folks who are law-abiding, who...
Soccer dads as well, just so you know.
Soccer dads, tennis dads, who are law-abiding, and the reminder of their speed through the speed sign will cause them to drop down, to a more, to the speed limit, or to a safer rate. So that's, that's kind of my, my thought on this, when I look at the, you know, the limited number of signs, that we have eight, correct, that we're going to be...
Two, four.
Twelve, twelve that we'll be putting in, so, it's, where's our best bang for our, our buck? We don't necessarily want to put them where the speeders are, where the intentional speeders are, we want to put them where the unintentional speeders are driving. So that's my thought on that, I don't know if that makes sense to anybody, but...
No, I agree.
Well, once again, I think, I agree, upper Chevy Chase Canyon, I don't think that's where we're going to get the most bang for the buck, so I'd like to see one on Canyatta, and all we do is complain about speeding on Glen Oaks, meaning speeding on West Glen Oaks, if we just put another one there, I think that's an idea, I mean, at least it's going to register, it's going to, one right around the big boy, actually, that section of Glen Oaks. But anyway, I just think for sure on Canyatta, and somewhere on, on the western portion of Glen Oaks, if we do that, at least it's going to register, people will understand, oh wow, I was, I'm way over the limit, so, that's where I think they should go.
Mr. Yusefian?
Let me give my two cents. I think, I think the lower part of Chevy Chase is definitely warranted, because once in a while, when I drive through there to go visit Ginger, I see people pass me, and I'm driving an MR2, so, it's a sports car, so it's not that I'm driving an old fogies car, that people go, oh, well, he's too slow, just that I'm driving speed limit, and they'll just pass me, just cut me off on the left and go. And, believe me, these are not young people, these are some of the soccer moms, some of the soccer dads, some that are older than I am, okay? So, it, it's all kind of drivers, I don't know what's the hurry, why they need to get home, or whatever the heck they have to get to, thirty-second doesn't make a difference, because all it is, it's the speed is not what kills you, it's that sudden stop that kills you, but after you hit somebody, and let's hope you don't take somebody else with you. The other location that I think is worthy, while my colleague who lives in Chevy Chase, where I have seen it, is around Buckingham, and that's part of the reason for two reasons. One, Linda Vista, all the college kids that are driving to the, to the school, they use that from Pasadena Art Center, coming down Linda Vista, and they drive like crazy. The other thing is, as you are coming down the hill from, uh, before you get to Buckingham, that's a downhill drive, I mean, I don't know what the percentage is, it's ten percent, what is that, eight percent grade?
About it.
Around eight percent, and, and sometimes people don't realize how fast the vehicle is moving, and that has, has happened even to me when I'm on Glen Oaks, sometimes you're driving, and you're, you know, you're not putting the gas on or anything, I have a stick shift car, and put it on second gear, and sometimes even in second gear, it will get off and keep going further than what it's supposed to be going to. So to me, I think having them in locations that people who really have good intentions, but sometimes in the hustle and bustle of the day, they forget what their speed is, because most of the time they're not looking to their odometer, because they're on the cell phone or something else, that drive, brings your attention. Now, on, on Glen Oaks, I think the low, two locations that you got, Mount Carmel and Valtonia Drive, I think that's, those are two good locations, because there's a school there, so it alerts people's attention before they get to the school, I'm assuming, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one further up, is that before the park, or after the park? It should be somewhere before the park.
It's before the park.
From both directions?
Right.
Okay, because...
In your house.
Well, I don't care about, oh, so it's going to be flashing in front of my house?
Does, does he have a conflict?
You know what?
Does he have a conflict?
That's fine, I don't have a problem, I'm not looking so crazy, looking forward.
You might, you might have a conflict, you better consult with the city.
Do I have a conflict? There's a flash in front of my house?
The question is whether or not it's going to increase or decrease the value of your real property.
I think it will.
Is it going to decrease it?
Not a, not a real estate broker, I couldn't tell you.
If your bedroom is facing the flashing light.
No, my bedroom is in the back.
Whether or not it's improvement to a street, that would, that would have a reasonably foreseeable material financial effect on your real property.
There's the door.
And if you want to be safe, you might want to recuse yourself.
Do you want a refund?
If it's going to be in front of your house.
Oh, yeah.
You better be safe.
You have anything more to add?
All right.
I would recommend that you do that...
Mrs. Starbird, before I...
Conservative...
Is this right in front of my house? Because my house is on Gardner, this is not on Gardner.
No, it's not there, Mr. Yusefian. Is it three hun, what is it, three hundred feet?
It's five hundred feet if it's directly involved, but this is indirect.
How far is Gardner from here?
So it's, if it's, if it's not right across a street from his house, where would have an, where would arguably be directly involved, it's an improvement that...
It's a mighty road that goes up to the...
Right before the park, that's the last street before the...
You're before and after the park.
Before the Shoal Canyon.
So Edwards, then there's the park, and then there is Gardner, okay, so...
Doesn't matter, you, you have people coming from the Shoal Canyon Golf Complex, up and down, hitting fifty to sixty miles an hour.
Okay.
They're really rolling, they get enough planes.
How long is that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't...
How far is that, is it five hundred feet, or is it three hundred feet, or was it, how wide is the park?
Wide?
Councilman Yusefian, I don't exactly remember the dimension, but we can, you know...
It's a city block.
Okay, I'm a city block away, so...
You're a city block away, given what I know of these signs, you would, you would not have, it's, it would not be an improvement that provides direct benefit to your property, like a sewer line or something, right in front of your home.
You're the second house up.
So it would be indirect, and if it's indirect, it's presumed not to be material.
You know what, I ain't going to take the chance, I'm going to go back room, call me later.
There it is, quickly.
The record should reflect that Mr. Yusefian owns property at or near the location of one of these signs.
Hey, Mr. Starbird, and I'll make my comments.
Well, Mr. Mayor...
And as a result, he's recusing himself, leaving the dial.
We probably all have our personal choices of where we'd like to see one of these signs placed, I'm wondering, Mr. Bagdanian, if not, two signs, four signs, one facing each direction, two locations up at Chevy Chase, can you think of a next higher priority that you would...
I can give you two when I have my chance to talk, how about Highland, how about Grandview? We've been, had people stand here, because they're saying they're going sixty, seventy miles an hour, down Grandview and Highland, it's one-lane ride.
It's a good choice.
It's downhill all the way, and they're, we've had them standing here, talking about the speed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to clarify one point, is that these signs are portable, in other words, we can do an installation...
That was my other question.
And then we can relocate, which the five signs that we have had...
They're on rubber wheels, you attach them and you roll them, right?
Well, we have to have power...
What do you mean portable?
We have to have power close by, so one of the limitations of installation of these signs is that...
It's not solar, what is, what is portable, then?
It's not portable.
It's, it's, it can be moved, Mr. Mayor, these can be moved, if it proves to be a location, it's not effective, it can be moved.
And if it's on solar power, what do you need?
No, it's, it's hardwired.
Oh.
What we can do is, we can revisit these locations, these are twelve, the bid that we have is for twelve locations.
And you can pick them.
We can make a list of those, Mr. Starbird said, if you wish, we can pick other streets that we also have a potential speeding problems, and make that list in addition to Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks Canyon, give you a recommendation, because these are per-location installations.
Let me, let me suggest, we don't seem to have a disagreement with respect to any of the signs, except the four faces on Upper Chevy Chase, for which you have thoughts about where they can be reassigned, unless there's a consensus of where you'd like to see them go, we're happy to take your direction, but I, I think, for example, the Highland issue, where you have had residents complaining, you do have slightly sloping streets, can I suggest your direction be to the traffic engineer, to put them on the next highest priority where they would achieve the best purpose? Again, it's not like they can't be moved, they're not portable in the sense of being on wheels, but they can be disconnected and relocated to other sites if indeed we find they're not being effective where they go.
All right, then I'll, if I may, if I'll move that the upper, the lights on the Upper Chevy Chase be moved to the next highest priority.
Or upper two, or upper four?
Upper four.
It's four free ones, Mr. Kater, you agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine, and I think we do have at least two council members that are interested in Canyatta, how about yourself, Mr. Najarian, are you also interested?
Canyatta is one of those roads where your speed can just get away with you, just due to the straightness and the downhill grade, so that would not be... I might also note, John, oh, I presume we will take traffic counts before and after, so you can see whether a sign is being effective, if it's not, you might as well put it someplace else, you know, six months or a year from now.
That's correct.
I, I won't vote for that, I'm outvoted, but that's two lanes south, two lanes north in Canyatta.
Well, you can put two on Canyatta and two on Highland.
One aiming in each lane?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Mr. Mayor...
You're getting the maximum benefit out of doing that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you allow staff, we will definitely come back with good locations, additional locations for you.
Why don't you do that?
And, and give you those high priority locations.
Do you want to date certain?
We have to...
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to...
Mr. Mayor, we have, Mr. Mayor, we have a bid we have to award, we can come back and talk about this some more, but we're, we're dealing with maybe two or four sign faces, and in six months...
Can we award the bid?
Yes.
If you can award the bid, but we're going to have to tell the contractor that in two locations, we're going to give you a different location, he may want some more money to make a different location, but I doubt that's going to be the case.
If it is, it'll be minimal, we've already talked about it.
So you'll come back to us on...
Okay.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, so what are we doing?
Moving to...
I know you're awarding it, but what are we coming back to you with?
Uh, the four, the four on Upper Chevy Chase.
Okay, just the four, and where engineering would suggest they go, okay.
One more technical question, do they also pick up the speed of motorcycles?
Yes, if it's in the direct line, they are very sensitive.
They're a little near his home.
On four, on four-lane roads, would they necessarily be...
On four-lane roads, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Depending on how far it is from the sign.
Because my friends at the Ducati dealership, and up in Montrose, are going to be very irate, I'm sure, as they come down Canyatta.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that, taking Mr. Bagdanian, and a roll call, please.
Council members Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian? Mayor Weaver?
Aye, invite Mr. Yusefian back, please, what is next, please?
At eight C is Director of Public Works regarding seismic upgrade of the Municipal Services Building, spec number three-one-five-one. At eight C one is motion awarding contract to DJM Construction Company, Inc., and directing the city manager to execute the contract. At eight C two is motion approving a loan from SunTrust Leasing Corporation, an amount not to exceed eight million, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, pending an additional funding determination by the Federal Emergency Management Administration, FEMA, or a permanent financing plan for the project. And at eight C three is a resolution of appropriation of eight million, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the Municipal Services Building.
Question for City Attorney's Office, can we do all three at once, just shake your head, yes or no, or one at a time?
Can I say back there?
Well, yeah, you can, maybe you could go faster, I didn't say that.
It was real nice back there, I know why Mr. Najarian wants to keep going back there.
Mr. Howard, can we do all three in one motion, or one at a time?
You, you can do all three at one unless there's a potential for a different vote.
With that knowledge, I have one speaker card. Speaker, okay, two minutes, Mr. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, the public, I'm Barry Allen. The, this particular issue of mortgaging our soul, I guess, for another eight million dollars, I certainly question the wisdom of the federal government suggesting that the city go out and borrow eight million dollars, and looking at the collateral that we're going to be using, all of this fire equipment, helicopter, all the stuff that's going to have to add up, what's going to happen if council's unable to wave the magic wand and find the, the money tree? That, you know, we're spending a lot of money, there are a lot of issues that are coming before the council, there are a lot of budgetary issues, and I think that we have to be very serious about saying, do we need to do this retrofit now? As I recall from a presentation here, we watched one particular company that was the expert in this type of retrofitting, and I don't see him around anymore, unless they're one of these two that are bidding. But there was a company that bid on the project, and where are they today? Maybe the money wasn't sufficient, maybe we don't need to do this, maybe we don't have to borrow in the future, and we can just live with what we have within our means, or cut some other expenses. You know, the, the last four years, $20 million of fire department over time. Boy, you could chomp out a lot of that and get a lot more for the money. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard, asking you to think before you vote.
Is there a motion, discussion?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. This morning around noon, I did get this interdepartmental communication item that basically deals with the financing terms and agreements of this item. And my question is, why do we have to hawk all of these items to borrow the money? Why can't we borrow money from some other things? I mean, the city gave us a double A, double A plus rating yesterday, I was reading it, that we got, so why not hawk the building that we're trying to retrofit?
Answer, please.
Ron Allers from Finance, Councilmember Yusefian. This is one of the cheapest ways, from transaction cost point of view, to actually borrow the money. One, we already have a master lease agreement with SunTrust. And two, it would be required to do title search and so, and documentation and so forth, so we're talking about a few thousand dollars versus doing a building which could run $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 to put a mortgage on it, if you will, for the, for the $8 million. So we would be putting up, we're putting up collateral either way, if you want to think about it. One is mobile equipment that has a useful life anywhere from four years, eight years, 12 years, or longer in the term of fire apparatus, beeline buses, helicopters, so forth, or we can put up a building that can have a useful life 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. Either way, it's collateral. So this is one of the cheapest ways to go out and borrow the money. And also, we are looking at, if we do get FEMA reimbursement, by, by doing this, we can then turn around and pay back the loan in a year, or two years, or three years, whenever we get the FEMA reimbursement money.
I might add, if we are not successful with FEMA, and the loan with an outside agency gives us the best chance of being able to convince FEMA that they should fund these costs. If we're not successful getting a FEMA grant, we can make a decision then to come back in and move things around in our CIP and tighten our belt, if indeed that's what you want to do, and prepay this early. I should point out that if we utilized a building, you'd be talking about a finance structure much like we used on the police building. It is a very complex structure to put one of those together, and frankly, very costly unless you're borrowing very large sums of money. In this case, if you'll note the interest rate of 4.5, it would probably be unlikely we'd secure that in a COP issue today. We, we might not even beat that, and you'd be incurring a half a percentage point or a point just in your issuance costs. So the fact that we have this relationship with this firm, they really only deal in rolling stock, that's what they finance. They were willing to do this, but they wanted to have rolling stock as collateral, because that's what they know what to do. And it was frankly the easiest and the least costly approach to putting together a financing that'll let us proceed with a bid on a building that, you know, Mr. Mr. Allen can predict when and if the next earthquake might occur, then possibly we could defer this work, but we've been living on borrowed time to date.
For nine years.
Yeah, borrowed time.
Ten years.
And this has no prepayment penalty?
No prepayment penalty.
The, the option that we recommended, option three, has no prepayment penalty.
We're paying a slight increase in the rate to get that, and that's the 4.5%.
Mr. Menuchyan?
I also have a grave concern about, as Mr. Yusefian puts it, parking all this equipment. First, I do believe that the work has to be done. It's a safety issue. It's our employees' safety issue. If an earthquake hits, I don't want to see anyone hurt, so I do think that this should be done. However, I just, I just think you're going about this the wrong way. We have in excess of $400 million in reserves. I don't understand why we cannot borrow from a fund and pay it back with interest, with the foregone interest. If, if we're looking at doing loans, I just, I think we should, there should be a fund, maybe the GWP fund, that we have quite a bit of money, and I don't know legally whether we can borrow from that fund or not, but I'm sure that there's a fund we can borrow from, that there's some money in, and we can pay it back with the foregone interest, so we don't have to put up all this equipment. I've, I've never seen this done before, and it just, it just doesn't feel right to me. I just don't feel comfortable with this.
Mr. Starbuck?
Very, very quickly, we could do that. FEMA doesn't make a distinction among our various funds. They view the city as the city. They don't make a distinction about whether we've got a GWP fund or a sanitation fund, and frankly, they won't make that distinction about this loan. They'll say, obviously, you can afford to cover this, we, the federal government, have higher priorities. We, we will likely not stand a chance of getting this funding from FEMA, because they will say, you've already funded this. See, you, the city, have been able to do this, therefore, you don't need our help. Even though we think they're obligated, they will tell us, we have a lot of higher priorities. You've already found a way to do this on your own, you haven't had to turn to outside resources.
Well, they can say that in both cases.
Again, we think we stand a greater chance of getting it funded with this structure, outside sources. We can always run that risk. We can fund it internally. You're absolutely right. We can do that. It.
How were we planning on funding it when we started this work?
We had an estimate, estimated cost nine years ago that we felt we could do this project within the FEMA money that's been rolled over from the Northridge originally. No, it was 4.7 or so?
It was five, actually, but that was only the, what was called gap fund monies that we were able to procure. We, we never had a solid estimate. We figured it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $7.5 million at that time, somewhere.
We anticipated going back to FEMA, and frankly, until, until Katrina, they were, they were much more willing to fund these programs, so we weren't that concerned about getting additional funds from FEMA. It's only been with the Katrina hurricane, and frankly, the issues that FEMA has had to face in the last several years, that they have really tightened up what they're willing to fund. They'd rather come in and frankly assist you after it's fallen down than to help you make sure it's not going to fall down. And so this structure puts us in a best position to do that. I will tell you, if FEMA, if FEMA doesn't fund this, we'll be back to you right away and suggest that frankly we take this loan out and find a different way to finance it that you'd be more comfortable with, and frankly, I'd be more comfortable with.
That was gonna be my next question, actually, so.
That's, that's why, that's why Ron has recommended this, and he's secured a loan that would not have a prepayment penalty. We think it's worth the extra $10,000 cost a year, so that if indeed we desire to prepay it, we can do it without a penalty.
And if, and if we get the funds from FEMA, we will be offsetting against it.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes.
And is that, is that, is that stated in, in the motion? Or the resolution of appropriations?
The resolution would approve a loan on these terms that are contained in the staff report.
And the prepayment, does it state that if FEMA does provide funding, it will be paid back against these funds, against this lease?
No, we'd have to craft the motion. Right now, I have a draft of a motion on the, the lending component of this item, and we'd actually have to start crafting it. For example, we weren't certain if the council was going to agree to encumber all of the rolling stock or certain rolling stock without the helicopter, for example, so those are some details that need to be crafted at night.
But, but certainly that, that provision's acceptable to your staff.
And, and FEMA doesn't have, is not privy to these meetings where you're stating that we have a better chance of getting it? And wouldn't that work against us now that you've stated it in public?
You shouldn't have asked.
How are you drawing attention to it possibly?
You know, that's part of the business, I guess.
They're video streaming. Yep, they are.
We hope we can convince them that they should fund this, as we think they have an obligation to.
If FEMA says no, and we have to go in a different direction, how much would this loan cost us? $40,000, $60,000?
It would be the, the interest, so it would be the 4.5%. And again, since we're using borrowed money and keeping our money in the bank, we're really only talking the differential. The latest city treasurer report for June showed us earning 3.4%, so we're only losing 1.1% of the, of the principal, if you will, so it's, it's really not that expensive.
And I might point out, if, if we had for some reason to keep the loan in place, it's very likely, given where interest rates are going, at some point, we'd be making money on the money we're keeping in our portfolio, because this rate is so low, and it's fixed.
Does any of this put any of the equipment in jeopardy?
No, we don't believe it does. At the end of the day, all you'd have to do is pay off the loan.
Right, the, the, the risk would only be if we default.
If we default.
And they repossess.
And they repossess. That isn't going to happen. That isn't going to happen. Looking for a motion.
Well, we need, we need to stay on top of this with the FEMA application, so. Mr. Mayor, I would move 8C1, 2, and 3. With a crafted motion.
Well, and, and on 8C2, the question is, we've got Exhibit A that outlines the rolling stock. Are you comfortable with staff determining the rolling stock to encumber the $8.325 million loan?
Right, I'm comfortable with that.
So it'll be essentially, the motion will be to approve it on the terms and conditions outlined in Exhibit A, which is the staff report plus the attachment, and on the terms and condit, well, based upon the, the list of rolling stock outlined therein.
And the lender would review this list and make their determination whether it's acceptable?
We'll work with the lender. We'll work with SunTrust.
Well, let's encumber the old stuff, not the new stuff, by those, those feline buses that didn't have the.
They're watching that, too.
It's gonna be actually a function of appraisal.
The better off we are.
It's gonna be a function of the value over time, based upon appraisal.
Okay, we'll leave that. Forgot what I striked, striked those last comments.
The city council furniture.
Is there a second?
No, not yet.
Second.
Okay, move them second. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
8D is City Attorney regarding exchange of city-owned property at Pennsylvania and St. L Avenue for privately owned property commonly known as Deer Pass. At 8D1, ordinance for introduction for land exchange.
Okay, I have one card.
Mr. Mayor?
Question?
I have one question, actually. Didn't we do this about three years ago?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you adopted an ordinance a few months ago. As the staff report notes, and Ms. Sansoni is here to provide you with more detailed information, we have made considerable progress, but it's a somewhat complex deal. It requires the recording of a final map with the county, both on the, principally on Pennsylvania, because we need to be able to transfer ownership, and also on the Deer Pass property. Lot of details to work out. With, both parties thought we could get there within that 90-day, approximately 90-day timeframe, and we didn't. This is just another ordinance which would, we're not amending the existing ordinance because it's expired. This is another ordinance to give us more time to complete it. The actual deal itself was struck more than three years ago.
That was like two months after I got elected the first time.
It was, it was, the, the deal was actually struck a number of years ago, but to get to where we are now has taken a long time.
Which, which has required entitlements.
Oh, yeah. We, it has, it has.
Until he had entitlements on his property.
We could have probably done the Middle East peace process.
No, I don't think you'd have been successful there. Maybe other, maybe other big things, but not that.
Okay, I have one card. Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. Looking at this particular issue, I know there are a number of issues. Why has it taken five years to get it here? And I see that, of course, the Ganji Company has been also a supporter of the Virgilia Productions Miss Asia. And I would like to read a brief note here, that is from the city's website, a press release when Mr. Weaver was voted in. And it was, in addition to serving on the city council, Weaver is past president of the Glendale Canyon, Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association, and we'll skip down a little bit to the Rosefloat Association. In addition, he is currently a member of the executive board of the Miss Asia USA Pageant. And I would strongly suggest that because of that, and the fact that Ganji has sponsored Miss Asia, that he recues himself from any vote and discussion on this particular matter. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Ganji built my house 35 years ago. Do I have a conflict?
Not based on that, sir.
Thank you. This is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce the ordinance at 8D1.
Let us next, please.
9A is Director of Plan Regarding Appeal of Use and Standards Variants, Case Number PVAR 2005-042, Located at 4701 through 4749 San Fernando Road. And 9A1 is motion continuing the matter and directing a city attorney to prepare written findings to reverse the BZA decision and deny use on standards variance. 9A2 motion continuing the matter and directing a city attorney to prepare written findings to sustain the BZA decision and approving use on standards variance.
Okay, first, I'd like to know the applicant and the appellant. I have three on one side and three on the, or two on the other. Mr. Gaddis, are you gonna represent on the one side, or are you and Robert Ring both gonna represent?
I don't believe that Mr. Ring is on the same side.
Oh, he's on the other side. Oh, he must be representing the other side.
I believe that.
Okay, so you're gonna represent Mr. Gay.
Mr. Gay, Gay's token.
Two.
I'm Robert Ring. I can save you three minutes. I withdraw respectfully any request of speaking.
Ah, as needed. Okay. Okay, Mr. Two attorneys are shaking hands. Look at that, Mr. Najarian. Before the battle, they shake hands, just like.
Professional courtesy, Mr. Weaver.
Football, they do that at the 50-yard line.
Can we send them over to Middle East?
Then they go out and kill themselves.
I know one of them is Lebanese, so can we send them over to Middle East? I, you probably solve the problem right away.
Okay, and who's? Stan Mydon, are you gonna speak on the other side?
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me try and straighten those.
Trying to figure out who's going first.
I, I know you are. Let me, let me give you a hand here. In this situation, we have the somewhat unusual fact that it's my office that has filed the appeal with respect to the border zoning adjustments determination on this request for a variance. To quickly summarize the reason for that, and then I will turn to Edith Fuentes to give the staff presentation, and then to Gillian Van Miden and Redevelopment Agency staff to essentially present the appellant's case with the recommendation for the city council determining that.
I was getting those appellate calls first.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under our rule, under our ordinance, the appellant can go first, but it's the council's call ultimately as to the burden of, of going forward.
Mr. Gaddis, do you care either way? He doesn't care either way. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Since, since the city manager appealed this, does he go in the back room?
I'd be happy to go in the back room.
This is the last time I ever want to hear this back room.
I haven't gotten to go in the back room this evening.
During the night, football, I can see the back room. It's a World Series.
Send them back there.
I'm going to the back for the World Series.
Let's just, let's just say if he had an actual vote, there'd be a question, if he doesn't vote.
So you starting out, Mr. Starbuck?
Yes, very quickly, and then I'll turn to Edith Fuentes for a staff overview, and then turn to Gillian Van Miden and Redevelopment Agency staff to carry the appellate position. It was my view with the determination by the BZA that in fact it was contrary to the best interests of the Redevelopment Agency and city in, both with respect to the zoning along San Fernando Corridor and with respect to the redevelopment plan, that this use continue. In summary, the use, we believe, is inconsistent with the redevelopment plan and with the zoning, and certainly inconsistent with the efforts that the city and agency have taken over the vast number of years, the last number of years, to improve the overall area through both the inclusion of public improvements, as well as updating of the zoning for the area. It was on that basis that I asked staff to review the BZA's decision, if appropriate, to file an appeal, which we did. The City Attorney's Office has Gillian Van Miden and Redevelopment Agency Bob Cadillac preparing the position on behalf of the appellant. And as noted, Edith Fuentes will provide the background, or as you're used to, the staff report. So let me suggest we first have Edith present the staff report. Edith Fuentes, zoning administrator.
Powerpoint?
Powerpoint, Edith. Powerpoint, yes.
Mr. Mayor, it's the one I just distributed. Apologize for it being late, but we were making some last minute changes. And you've also got revised draft minutes for BZA that have been distributed in front of you. They have not been adopted by BZA yet, but the draft has been revised on the advice of. of the chair, and I think it's--
Revised as of today?
Yes, they were just distributed to you.
Revised again.
Well--
Because I got something like that yesterday.
It may have been yesterday that you first saw it.
Okay, yeah. Same one.
May get hotter.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, good evening. Edith Fuentes, zoning administrator and hearing officer for this case. This, I'm gonna go straight to the PowerPoint presentation. This hearing is for an appeal of a May 15, 2006 decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which granted use on standards variance case number 042 to allow the continued operation of an inoperable vehicle storage facility in a T-zone. Again, this case is, or property is located at 4701 to 4749 San Fernando Road. Applicant is Mr. Carville Gaye, and the appellant is James Starbird, City of Glendale. This is a use on standards variance to allow, again, the continued operation of inoperable vehicle storage facility, which is located in the T-zone and located in the MTA right-of-way. Again, per the zoning code, an inoperable vehicle storage facility is not a permitted use in the T-zone. Glendale Municipal Code, Chapter 30.13, I just want to quickly talk about the purpose of a T-zone.
Hold on a second. Mr. City Attorney, does, does Mr. Najarian have a conflict of interest considering the fact he's on the MTA? And this is on the MTA right-of-way?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I actually, Mr. Najarian contacted me about this, and we've discussed it, and we've obtained information from MTA, and the answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
Well, since we're on that subject, and I'm sorry to interrupt Ms. Fuentes, may I inquire whether Mr. Gaye has any additional contracts or business dealings with the MTA? I'm getting a no. Just for the record, Mr. Gantis, if you would-- Mr. Gantis is indicating, no, there are no further business dealings.
John Gantis, 100 West Broadway, no, we have no other interest other, with the MTA other than the lease on that property.
Thank you. Sorry.
And just so the record is clear, those leases are handled administratively, they are entered into, negotiated, and ultimately terminated by staff, not the board. Board does not get involved in leases.
Even though the compensation is for the organization--
Compensation to members of government agencies are not, are not sources of income under--
No, 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 I mean, MTA getting the money as a lease, that does not preclude him from--
Board doesn't have any influence over the lease.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Whoever mayor is, I just want clarification on that.
Proton's right here.
The only, oh, yes, sir. July, Mr.-- It is not a lease.
August, yes.
It is--
Is it August?
It is a month-to-month tenancy, not a lease, if that makes any difference.
Gone too.
Continuing on--
We're sorry, Ms. Fuentes.
That's okay. The T-zone was created to include those properties located within and along the railroad right-of-way. This zone, the T-zone properties were previously zoned M2, light industrial. We will later on go through some of the list of uses that were allowed in the M2 zone, but I would like to just emphasize that there were 78 uses that were previously allowed in the M2 zone. And when the city council rezoned the area to T-zone, it became a very short list of specific and very limited uses that were established. Seven uses versus 78 uses. Therefore, the list of permitted uses was established to prevent the incompatibility of uses adjacent to the railroad tracks. The new uses are limited in comparison to the uses which were allowed under the M2 zones. And again, these uses are generally characterized as transportation and communication-type business, which we believe are not intensive and not conflicting with other permitted uses in the area. What is the purpose of a variance? Municipal Code, Section 30.33010. The purpose of a variance is to assure that no property, because of the special circumstances applicable to it, shall be deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zone or vicinity. The other question I ask myself prior to granting a variance is that, will this variance also create an advantage over other uses within the area? These are some of the permitted uses in the two zone, in the T-zone and the former M2 zone. I'm just gonna quickly go through them, and we only gave you the main categories in the listing. And quickly going through the four findings that are required by Section 30.43030 of the zoning code. It states that a variance shall be granted only if the zoning administrator finds that. Number one, the strict application of the provision of any such ordinance would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship, inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. I was not able to find this finding. There are, the following reasons are given in your packet, I'm just gonna quickly go through them again. The use is allowed in other zones. We have the industrial-commercial-mix-use, industrial-commercial-residential-mix-use, and industrial zone, so there are other areas or zones where this use could go. The use is not compatible with existing uses or neighborhood. This is the only inoperable vehicle storage facility in this zone. The use is not allowed in this zone and was not allowed in the previous zone, and the use has been in violation of conditions of approval since January of 2003.
Ms. Fuentes, I have a question. We allow this in IMUR?
Yes.
That's something I think in the cleanup we should be looking at.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask a question, this second asterisk, the use is not compatible with existing uses. In fact, there's automotive use all over that neighborhood, almost directly across the street. So what do you mean by not compatible?
But across the street, they are the right zones or the proper zones for this type of uses, like auto repair shop, body shops, they are in the right zones. And again, at the public hearing, no justifiable hardship was presented by the applicant, and I consider this a self-imposed hardship. Not to mention also that economics is not a reason for granting a variance. Finding number two, that there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or to the intended use or development of the property that do not apply generally to other property in the same zone or neighborhood. Again, I did not find this finding. The use is not allowed and not compatible with the new San Fernando Road corridor, and it's not within the approved city landscape project for this area. The property is not unique, it's similar in size and shape to other MTA properties within the area. Again, the use is not allowed in this zone, but allowed in other zones. City Attorney's Office and Neighborhood Services have pending enforcement case on this property. Finding number three, that the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in such zone or neighborhood in which the property is located. This finding, again, was not found and was not present. The continued use will perpetuate a non-conforming and non-permitted use in this zone. There's continued violation of conditions of approval and violation of the TO contract and blight conditions. Granting of the variance will impact the dynamics of other uses within the area and would lead to speculation for similar variances undermining the council's intent for there to be fairly set standards for all to abide by who are in similar circumstances. Again, granting the variance would allow an exception which conflicts with the overall objectives of the Glendale Municipal Code, the rezoning of this area, and the city's landscape plan, which was recently approved by the city council. Finding number four, that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance. Again, this finding was not present. The city's goal is to slowly eliminate non-conforming conditions. If granted, it would allow for a continued use of a non-conforming use which is not in keeping with the objectives of the ordinance as it relates to compatibility with adjacent uses and land uses. It would also abrogate the code by creating an advantage over other industrial uses within the area, as this is the only vehicle storage facility in this zone. Continued use will be inconsistent with the furtherance of the quality of the adjacent commercial, industrial, and transportation uses. And also, not to mention the IMU, IMUR, there will be residential uses that may be also created within the area, and these are some of the housing facilities we're, we're starting to get close by or within the vicinity.
And that's what, Smear, yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
That's one of the things I was questioning.
Right.
Because I, I think having, having, let's say, auto repair shop or whatever in the RMUR, I can understand they exist there, and we're allowing that type of thing, but an auto wrecking yard next to an RMUR, I can just imagine somebody built some, you know, mixed-use project, and right next to it is that-- Now, if our zoning is allowing it currently, then we need to deal with that before we end up having one of those, because this was one of those situations that maybe we did not catch at that time. And as we are dealing with it on the 15th, on the cleanup, we may have to deal with that issue.
Okay. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I was not able to find the four findings, therefore I denied the use on standards variance application. And at this time, I'd like to ask Rother, the case planner, to quickly go through the history or background of this case, so, Rother. And I just want to quickly mention, we also have Mike Grant from Legal Department, who's gonna briefly discuss the TO contract. We have Sam Engel from Neighborhood Services, Paul Early from Legal, Code Enforcement, and other staff will be available to answer any of your questions. Rother?
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Member of the City Council. I will briefly go over the background with you, which led to the appeal before you tonight. The case came to us back on July 7, 1988. The applicant submitted a use on standards variance under case number 8355-UNS to establish an inoperable vehicle storage facility on a property located in the M2 zone. The zoning administrator heard the case in August and approved the request in October. Subsequently, the applicant appealed the decision because of his inability to meet some of the condition of approval. At that time, a revised condition was granted by the BZA, and, and also a condition was added for the case to expire on May 11, 1999, which is 10 years later. April 27, 1999, the ZA and the Neighborhood Services Administrator sent letters to the applicant informing him of the impending expiration as well as the violation and continued use with an expired use and standard variance. September 2000, a new use and, and a new use and standard variance application was submitted under case number 10172, and the zoning administrator heard that case and also approved that case, which was set to expire July, January 18, 2003, or upon 30-day notice of the Redevelopment Agency. October 1, 2002, the zoning administrator sent again another letter to the applicant regarding the expiration of this variance, which was to expire January 18, 2003. And in that time, three years later, actually, the city council adopted GPA, General Plan Amendment 2004-01, and Zone Change 2004-01 for the rezoning of the San Fernando Road Corridor. The T-zone was created and the M2 zone was eliminated. September 15, 2005, the applicant submitted a new use and standard variance, which is the current case before you tonight, case number PVAR 2005-042, to continue, continue the operation of an inoperable vehicle storage facility, but this time in the T-zone. The request by the applicant was for a use variant to allow continued use of the railroad right-of-way for the storage of abandoned, impounded, or inoperable motor vehicles. And three standard items, one, to maintain the chain-link fences around, covered with tops, two, maintain an unpaved parking area, and three, provide no landscaping to the lot. February 15, 2006, the zoning administrator heard the case and denied the case in March of 2006, which the applicant appealed. And on April 4, 2006, the city council approved the landscape improvement plan and awarded the construction contract. April 17, 2006, a request for continuance was granted by the BZA, which the applicant requested, and the BZA heard the case on May 15, 2006, which the BZA reversed the ZA decision. And which brings us to May 26, 2006, when the city manager's office appealed the BZA decision to the city council. Some site characteristics, this, again, the zone is transportation zone, the lot is approximately 16,450 square feet, 470 feet wide and 35 feet deep. It is currently vacant, fronting San Fernando Road, and this is a site plan. To the rear is the railroad tracks, and beyond the railroad tracks, you see here is the city boundary, and this is the city of Los Angeles. This is a zoning map which shows the property along the railroad right-of-way, which is all-zone transportation. Across the street, we have several zones, IMUR, R2250, S-R, IMU, as well as IND, all within 300-foot radius of the subject site. This is an aerial photograph of the site, which was taken back, I believe, in 2003. This is the subject property. This is a view. The following photos are actually presented during the BZA hearing. This is a view looking towards Goodwin Avenue, I believe.
Few years ago.
Yes. This is one of the entrance to the storage facility.
Well, what do you mean, a few years ago?
Because the oleanders are clear up over the top of the fence.
Yeah, are they? Currently?
Yes. As of this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, these photos were presented before the BZA as well as the ZA hearing. This is another view of the gate leading to the property. Another view fronting San Fernando Road with the oleanders.
Old.
Yet another view of the front. These photos are fairly recent, again, they were presented during the BZA hearing back in May. These, the photos will show you some of the vehicles and the conditions they were in, some tires, forklift. This is the council-approved landscape project. As you can see, it's, the green strip is the landscape area in question. It is about 10 feet wide, three feet of which is owned by the city, and the seven feet is owned by MTA. The landscape project involves planting of trees and shrubs, as well as putting a fence behind the planting. This is another depiction of the project. The green area, again, is the landscape strip, and this is the storage facility in question, in the purple, just a continuation of that. This is the overall project. This is the overall project for the San Fernando Road Corridor. Thank you. That concludes my segment of the presentation.
So, when the landscape project is completed, because it's not even close to getting started yet, but when it's completed, how many feet is it going to take from this 35-foot depth? Is it going to take seven feet?
Seven feet.
Seven feet. So, it would be down to 20...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight feet.
Correct.
Sometime in the future, some year, some century.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
When is the landscaping plan going to be implemented?
Mr. Walker, send me the order.
Mr. Cadlec.
I mean, where are we on this? Is it in our lifetime or...
The council awarded the contract on May 4 of this year. The preconstruction, preconstruction hearing was held. We are currently negotiating with some of the underground utilities on placement of trees and expect answers from them in about four to five weeks on where those trees can be placed. Along the right-of-way are several conduit, underground fiber conduits that were put in years ago without encasement. They're just simply fiber bundles in the ground, and the utility companies are quite concerned that the trees that we're planting will engirdle their unprotected cable lines.
Wait a minute. Are you trying to tell me we got this far without the utility companies knowing or being involved in this?
They were involved.
If I can, that's not what he's saying. They were involved.
They were involved.
Originally and in the design.
And?
And they have changed hands, consolidated, and are now objecting to the original plan.
Oh, my God.
I mean, there are lots, there are lots of agencies that frankly don't care about this area or the way it looks. And as a result, every time we take a step, we have to go backwards too because somebody else weighs in and decides they'd rather have this remain exactly the way it is.
I nearly understand.
Yeah.
I've been there.
It's been very frustrating.
Who are they objecting to, Mr. Starbird?
They are, what are they objecting to currently?
I mean, the utility company is objecting to our tree.
They're objecting to the fact that they believe the trees and tree roots would be invasive and would follow their lines, which are in undisturbed soil, and over time would engirdle the lines and crush them. Usually when...
What do you mean by over time?
Well, as a tree grows, the roots grow, and they're concerned...
A year, two years, 10 years, 20 years?
They're saying three to five years. They believe it will engirdle.
That kind of tree.
And without being a protective casing, fiber lines would be crushed.
Are those lines only in that location?
They're up and down San Fernando Road, all the way from, all the way along the San Fernando Road right-of-way to downtown LA.
Petroleum line, there's, all kinds of petroleum lines in there.
Petroleum lines in there, several cable lines are in there, AT&amp;T, Quest, Verizon, Sprint.
So, does this throw wrench into the landscaping plan?
No, I don't think it throws a wrench into it. It just means we're going to have to work with them to try to come up with solutions that are acceptable to both parties.
It throws a wrench in there, that's all.
But, but, very typical of what we have faced over the past...
Oh, yeah.
...in my time here for eight years and before that, to try and do nothing more than put in a landscape plan to improve the view when at least we had oleanders and those were cut down by the, by the gas line company.
Pacific Pipeline.
So, it's been very frustrating. I mean, my last direction to Bob was, to hell with the firms, go install the landscaping, but legal, of course, tells me I shouldn't walk off the face of the earth in that fashion. So, that gives you a status.
Well, and if they are, if they're unbundled and not encased lines, what they're going to want is for us to do that.
That's exactly what they've said.
They may, they may, which is, which is quite expensive, and the project did not contemplate.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to put up the rest of the buildings up for a loan, that case.
No, this is everybody. God, unbelievable.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify the zoning. There was a statement that the towing use is permitted in IMU and IMUR. It's a conditionally permitted use. It's only permitted as a right in the industrial zone. I was just trying to get a quiet moment in there to get it in, but I hope that doesn't interfere with the discussion if you want to talk more about landscaping.
You've got it in.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this time, I'd like to ask Mike Grant to give you a little information about the tow contract.
Mr. Grant.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Mr. Starbird and staff, Mike Grant, senior assistant city attorney. I'm very familiar with the tow contract, and so I'm here to tell you a little bit about it, what is required and what is not required. And the reason that I am here tonight is that the applicant for the variance has stated that he needs this lot in order to be in compliance with the tow contract. And so, I'm just going to point out very briefly what is required and what is not required, meaning what is at the option of the tow operator. The tow operator in this case is the variant applicant, and he's in District 1, which is basically anything from the west of Brand Boulevard and to the southward to the city of Los Angeles, to the Burbank border, and then up to the Verdugo Fire Road. He has an agreement, just like three other operators with the city of Glendale. The agreement is consistent with, when it comes to facilities, the agreement reads alike for all four tow operators. The agreement became effective in January of this year for all four operators, including the variant applicant. Section 20 talks about the business office, storage lots, and disposal lots, the minimum requirements. The lot at issue here is a disposal lot. It's sort of the final resting ground for cars and trucks before they're lean-sold. They may be operative, they may be inoperative, but they're going to be lean-sold. So, there's, it's a place where the operator can temporarily store it pending the lean 21, 20.1, which I don't have a slide of, talks about what is absolutely required for facilities. In other words, the contract states that the contractor shall have and operate a business office, a primary lot, and a secondary lot. However, when it comes to the disposal lot, paragraph 20.2 says that the contractor may operate and acquire a disposal lot, which is the subject lot at issue here. And in other words, it's at the contractor's option or by choice. Contract is not required. It doesn't say that the contractor shall or must operate one. It also says alternatively that if the contractor doesn't want to operate a separate disposal lot, the contractor may operate the disposal lot on the main lot, the primary lot, or on the secondary lot. So, in this case, the variance applicant may operate the disposal lot on his main facility, the primary lot, or the secondary lot. The disposal lot, as well as all the other lots, has to comply with the city municipal code and GRA requirements. That was written in paragraph 20.3 of the contract. If the contractor decides or elects to, chooses to operate a disposal lot, then these are the only requirements with respect to the disposal lot. It has to be in IND, IMU, or IMUR zone if it's in Glendale, or it can be a quarter-mile outside the city of Glendale, meaning that if you were to draw a band one-quarter mile around the entire area, the entire city, that means to the south, to the west, to the eastern, north, anywhere in that area outside the city, towards Pasadena, towards Los Angeles, towards Burbank, he can have his disposal lot.
This is part of the contract?
Yes, these are...
Section 20.10?
Yes. These are actually the provisions in the tow contract. I'm also bringing up two other provisions of the contract. In a submittal to you last week from the attorney representing the variance applicant, it was mentioned that this disposal lot cannot be changed, cannot be moved, it's stuck there. Well, the qualifying phrase is really important. It says, except as paragraph 20, 20.13 provides, the contractor shall not relocate or move the disposal lot. Well, the very next paragraph states that with the permission of the chief of police, a contractor can relocate a disposal lot. The chief of police simply inspects the lot, and if he finds it acceptable, then the contractor can relocate the disposal lot. In many of the contracts, including this one with the variance applicant, special conditions were attached, basically in conformity with the wishes and desires of council, to fully upgrade these facilities. And in this particular one, just like the other ones, the contractor was given 180 days from the date that he signed the contract in which to bring up the facilities. And it highlighted in number A in 20.14, we talked about, what was written in the contract was some of the other facilities besides the new facility that this particular OPTS contractor was going to move into. Exhibit G, which listed many requirements to be completed in 180 days, required, absolutely required, the contractor shall do the following. When we came to F, it said that for the new facility, and we've underlined some relevant language, and all other towing and storage facilities that the contractor owns, operates, or maintains, that the operator had to obtain a variance, ZUC, allowing the facility's use. When I wrote that, that was intended specifically to address the subject property at issue here that...
Did they apply for the variance within the 180 days?
Yes.
Did they apply? They did?
Yes, yes.
So, they do comply with this provision?
Well, they...
Whether they were granted or not, they did try to apply for, for a variance as is stated in this section.
They do.
Okay.
But, so, we have, we have that, this and another property, this paragraph was designed to address the applicant's other property which had other code, which still have other code violations.
But the other properties are not in question today?
No. But that, but there is some question in submittal last week to the council stating that if there had been a problem with this property, it would have been listed in Exhibit G. And all I'm pointing out, that Exhibit G did encompass this property and another, the secondary lot of the operator.
I understand, I just... What is the other variance that the other property needed to have? Is it a variance or is it a code violation?
There's some code violations at the 629 Irving, the secondary lot.
Yeah, but, so, it's not just a variance, it's just...
Right.
In order to solve that, does he have to file a variance?
It's, it's still an open question. Still, it is, it is a subject...
Is it a height issue? Is it a setback issue? Is it, is something that that makes you with the building?
Setback and landscaping issue.
Okay, so, it's a landscaping and setback issue on a facility...
The secondary lot at 629 Irving.
That is probably an RMUR, RMUR or IND zone?
Yes.
Okay.
IND zone.
So, it is an IND zone. It just has other variance issues that they got to deal with.
I thought this was, hold on a second. I thought this was staff report. I know the staff...
The zoning administrator was a staff report. My suggestion is you open the public, this should be included as part of the record of the public hearing.
Okay.
The public hearing be deemed open.
Public hearing is open. Forget everything you heard, start over.
No. It's included in the public, it's included in the public hearing.
It's confusing. We never, I can't ever remember the appellant being the city staff.
That's, and that's, and that's certainly understandable.
Thought I was getting the staff report, but I'm also getting the appellate's report.
This is sounding more like evidence in the record.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, the hearing is open, retroactively. Go right ahead, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my presentation unless there's any questions.
Good timing, Mr. Howard.
Anti-climatic.
Well, now, we got all that strung out.
I got some question if this is a hearing now.
Well, we still have cars, is it...
Now, you have the appellate's case.
The defendant's case.
I know. I just want to make sure. I don't know when you want to ask your questions. Do you want to hear?
That's from Mr. Grant.
The appellate is Mr. Starbird.
Well, the appellate is represented by Jillian and Bob Cadlec, and they're speaking as the appellate. Mike, you can put in either camp.
Okay.
He was just giving you some information.
Do you want to ask the appellate questions before we proceed?
Well, Mike Grant is appellate or is just question? No.
It's one or the other or both? I don't know. Would you like to...
It's not really, it's not really relevant. What's relevant is the information is before you, it's part of the record.
Let me, let me, let me suggest that you first hear from Jillian Van Miden and Bob Cadlec, who will present on behalf of the appellate the case.
Sounds good. Okay, what do we hear already?
I'll wait.
I'll wait. You wait, okay.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Who's next?
Let's do this.
Jillian.
Mr. Cadlec, and then, the appellate side is done?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff, first, I'd like to point out that what was provided to you as well as to the applicant is a package of reference material. It's simply just that, it's reference material, the tow contract is included, copies of zoning information, transcripts of the BCA hearing, simply meant to assist you for purposes of making your determination this evening. As representative of the appellate, I would also respectfully request the opportunity to have some time for rebuttal and/or to answer questions.
Will you be the rebuttal expert or whatever?
It is likely so.
Okay.
I would like to indicate...
What do you mean it is likely so? Is that...
In the event that there are questions that are specific to landscaping or the tow contract, I would respectfully deter to other individuals who are more expert in those areas, and that's why I equivocated on my answer. I apologize.
Very good.
I would like to indicate that the appeal is in the staff report that is in your packet, and what it contains is a statement of error that was required to be made. And I would also like to indicate, before I launch into this any further, that the staff, myself certainly included, we appreciate the efforts that the BCA makes in its very difficult job that it does on an ongoing basis to make these determinations and to listen to this evidence. What the statement of error establishes is, unfortunately, in this case, that there was a violation of zoning code, and that did establish the basis of the appeal, that the board did exceed its authority in granting the variance because findings could not be made, that the board did not fulfill a mandatory duty, in other words, that there were insufficient substantial evidence or facts to support the variance findings that supported its decision. And the board did not consider all the facts in its decision and in reviewing the transcript that is apparent. Fifth, that most importantly, the evidence presented to the board was insufficient, as I said, for its ruling, and that there was some new evidence that we did include in our appeal, and that was pertaining to the MTA lease, which now you have more information. You're going to be received, you've already received a lot of information about this. We're fairly certain that the applicant will also be providing quite a bit of information. Really, my role here is just very quickly, and I know there's a lot of information up there, is to give you a legal framework within which you can evaluate the information that you're about to hear. And that goes to the four variance findings that need to be made. So, what are findings, and why do we need to make these, and why are they important? And that's why I've put together this PowerPoint, because it provides some of that legal basis. First of all, all applications must be, rulings on applications must be accompanied by written findings supported by substantial evidence on the record that satisfy the local zoning ordinance. So, we need always keep in mind, we're looking at what the requirements of this, this local zoning ordinance is. And those findings that are made need to bridge that analytical gap. They can't be conclusory. They need to connect that raw evidence and data on the ground with the ultimate decision that gets made by the decision-maker. The findings cannot be made without, well, a finding that is made without discussion or deliberation fails to show that, that bridge that analytical gap or that route to how the decision was made. And we need also remember, and the courts tell us, that there is no presumption that a decision-maker's ruling rests upon necessary findings and that such findings are supported by substantial evidence. Those findings have to be expressly stated and must set forth the relevant facts supporting them. So, this is the legal basis that we take when we begin to look at the findings that the BCA made or didn't make. The next slide sets forth, and this is from the seminal case, the Topanga case that I, that was on the first page, Topanga Association for a Scenic Community. It's a 1974 case, but we still rely on it today because it really provides the guidance that we need to understand the purpose for making findings. And it, what it really ensures in these five purposes is the integrity of the process because it provides a framework for making principled decisions, to facilitate orderly analysis, and serve for a public relations function. analysis and serve for public relations function. And it helps in the two last purposes to establish a record so that we are capable, or a court is capable of knowing what it will review. So how do you know whether findings are sufficient? You go through a two-step analysis. The first step is set forth here. Does substantial evidence support the findings? What is substantial evidence? It's facts, expert opinion, or reasonable assumption based on facts? What it is not is unfounded opinion, speculation, or conclusory findings. And it's important to take that into consideration as we look at these, some of these facts, and as facts are presented to you this evening. A couple of examples of substantial evidence from cases that I found are staff's opinion, or a testimony that you may hear describing problems or issues relevant to the requests that are being made from people that have personal experience and can state that on the record. If we could go to the next slide. And the second step in this process is whether or not the findings support the board's decision. And again, here's that bridging the analytical gap issue that we need to look at. The findings have to expose the agency's mode of analysis. In other words, there needs to be some deliberation and analysis to extent sufficient to, for us to know whether a review of a decision can be made. And the second component of that is it must relate to the issue at hand, its relevancy. A lot of what we may or may not hear may not, in fact, be relevant to the decision in looking at the four variance findings. The other component of that is whether or not the complete finding is addressed. And I thought it was an interesting case, the Arinda Association case and striking down variance finding, because what it did is it sort of, it went through an iteration of what that court did not believe was legally significant or relevant. And what was not relevant was the desirability of the proposed development, its attractiveness, its benefits to the community, or the economic difficulties of developing a property. Those lacked legal significance for the purposes of findings, and were simply irrelevant to the controlling issue, and this is what's important and what we'll be looking at, of whether strict application of the zoning, and here we're looking at the T-zone, and we've heard about the very limited set of uses, 13 uses, I believe, seven uses, I believe, that are now permitted there, as opposed to the prior 78 M2, whether that strict application would prevent a, in that case, the would-be developer from using his or her property to the same extent as others in the same zoning district, not just anywhere else in the city, but a similarly situated property.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. To interrupt you, but, just so I can put all this in perspective, I mean, is it your premise that, that these are the areas in which the planning commission failed when they made their...
BZA.
I'm sorry, the BZA, when they made their determination?
Yes, it is, and I'm...
I'll follow along with you, but I'm...
Right at the end, and now that I've set forward that, forth that framework, Mr. Cadillac is going to now share with you very briefly what the findings were and how they were insufficient, because that's the examination that we need to make as the appellate, to establish for you as the appellate, that the findings cannot be made to support the decision to overturn the zoning administrator's denial of that variance in the first instance. The next few bullet points are just quick considerations that derive from the code. First, our GMC, the purpose of a variance, is not to grant a special privilege to one, but to ensure that one is not deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed. Difficult to make here in, when examining the issue, which is, this is the only use in this zone enjoying this particular benefit. Whether the fact that similarly situated properties got a variance, that's not relevant, and it should not be considered. Criteria for granting a variance, we're looking at disparities between property, not treatment of the property in the abstract. The applicant in the first instance, of course, has the burden of establishing whether the findings can be made, and on the last page, I think what's most important here is that the variance, in second to last, should advance, not undermine, the policies of the local zoning ordinance, and this is what the courts have said about the variance cases. And on that basis and setting forth that framework, I'd like to turn it over to Bob Cadillac, who's going to walk you through how this legal framework fits within the analysis of the appellate.
Mr. Mayor, did you give the appellate the time limit?
Well, I honestly did not. I was hearing staff report. I don't think any of us have been through one like this before.
Mayor.
Don't worry, I'll give Mr. Gannus plenty of time.
I have a question from Ms. Van Miden, almost, I'm worried to even ask a question from Ms. Van Miden. It's too early, she's pretty sharp at 4:00 in the morning, so I don't know. She's much, much sharper now. You mentioned that there are some of the evidence that we are seeing for a first time, and, and part of the evidence in here that I want to know if BZA got or not, that could be part of the reasons that they came to the conclusion that they did, was, did Mr. Grantis gave a report of the contract terms at the BZA hearing?
There was definitely discussion, and I'm sure he can address that personally.
And the particular sections of the code about what, what the person signed and so on and so forth, what was all given at the BZA hearing?
There was certainly discussion at the BZA, as Mr. Grant attended the meeting as well and provided answers to questions.
Was there a PowerPoint presentation presented on, on the contract, the way you presented it today?
No.
Okay, so it was not, it was just a verbal?
Correct.
You also mentioned there were some new evidence. What are those new evidence? That they did not see, that you are presenting it here, you talked about the lease with the MTA?
That was it.
Okay, and what is in that so-called new evidence that is supposed to persuade us to move in your direction and not uphold the BZA's four findings that they made?
That the lease also requires that the use conform to local zoning ordinances and rules and regulations, that that's, that's a contractual obligation of the applicant. Just additional information for the record. And that was the only new piece of information.
And they did not have that?
That was, that was not submitted during the, the BZA hearing.
Okay.
It's the MTA lease between the MTA and the applicant.
That's correct, the month-to-month lease. That was the only new information.
Okay.
Mr. Cadillac?
Next.
Mayor Weaver and members of the city council, Robert Cadillac from Development Services. As Ms. Van Miden and Edith Wentz has guided you through before, there are four findings that need to be made to support this variance, and I'm going to briefly walk you through those. You've heard them before, but I think we need to go through them again, and also point out where the BZA, we feel the BZA was insufficient or was, did not, their finding did not support the variance. First variance, that the strict application of any provision of any such ordinance would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship inconsistent with the general purpose of, or the intent of the ordinance. That's number one on the PowerPoint. The BZA found four findings. The applicant has leased the site at a month-to-month basis from the MTA. Since the lease can be canceled upon 30-day notice, the expense of installing a masonry wall cannot be justified. Three, any improvements made to the site will need MTA approval and will become MTA property. And four, the applicant will have no rights to continued use. All four of those findings are irrelevant to the issue of hardship finding. Leasing arrangements, the economics are not substantial evidence supporting this finding. A month-to-month lease does not establish practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Nor does it differ from anybody else who's leasing property in the MTA right-of-way. Everybody has a 30-day month-to-month cancelable lease. The applicant has a submarket month-to-month lease, he's had it for 18 years, and there's no long-term commitment. So these facts argue for...
The lease has been there for 18 years in the same location?
On a month-to-month basis.
21.
So these facts argue for a benefit of not, there's not a hardship. And they also established that the zoning administrator's findings were consistent. Two, that there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or to the intended use or development of the property that do not apply generally to other property in the same zone or neighborhood. The BZA found that the lot is unusual, unusually irregular in shape, and the proportion of the railroad right-of-way leased to the applicant is on a month-to-month basis. The expense cannot be justified, given the short-term lease. Two, the existing ollier trees and fence screens serve the same function as a masonry wall. Three, the applicant is also aware that San Fernando Road corridor improvement project may require the removal of the use in the future. And four, in the event the site needs to be vacated, due to any scheduled work on San Fernando Road corridor improvement project, the lease will be terminated. And items one and two are irrelevant and inaccurate, and they don't prove an exception. As the PowerPoint points out, the findings don't reflect the facts on the ground. All the lots in the MTA right-of-way are similarly shaped. It's 100 feet wide by however long it is, so there's no, there's no vast difference between any of the properties out there. So this applicant doesn't have an exceptional piece of property. The reference to a lease is an economic issue and not relevant to analysis of whether the property is affected by exceptional circumstances or conditions. All the other uses in the MTA right-of-way, as we discussed, are on a month-to-month. And the applicant has enjoyed a submarket rate lease for the site for the last 18 years. So we don't believe the findings were made. Also...
He's enjoyed a submarket rate lease?
Yes, from MTA.
How does that play into the variance issue?
It, it doesn't show a hardship. He's had, he's had the benefit of that submarket lease for 18 years, which nobody else has had, had a right to.
But in due respect, economics earlier on was said that it is not a part of the hardship.
Correct.
So what's fair for the goose is good for the gainer. So, I mean, if he can't use that, you can't use that either. Swan, let's stick to the same, same rules.
The applicant is also, I'll be covering three and four. The applicant's knowledge of the San Fernando Road landscaping does not establish an exceptional circumstance or condition unique to this property, and is not relevant. The entire T-zone prohibits the disposal lots, and the landscaping will apply generally to all the other properties in the right-of-way. So everyone is being treated fairly and equitably. The facts do not support the findings, and they do not support the decision. The ZAA's findings examine the facts and establish lack of exceptional circumstances or conditions to support granting the variance. The third item that has to be found is that the granting of the variance will not materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property improvements in such, such zone or neighborhood in which the property is located. The BZA found that the property is located in the T-zone, and the use is consistent with surrounding area. No changes will occur as a result of granting of this variance. Two, the storage lot is surrounded by railroad and street rights away in an industrial area. And three, the fence provides adequate security and screens functions to hide the stored vehicles. The staff's position is that it's inaccurate and conclusory. The T-zone does not permit the use, therefore, a statement that the use is consistent with the surrounding area inaccurately implies the use is consistent with the T-zone. The T-zone is, is only in that area exclusively.
We change it to a T-zone after they've been there for so many years.
Correct.
It wasn't, it wasn't where, it wasn't where we, we changed the zone, and then they applied to come in and have a lot there.
Correct.
Okay.
They had to buy space.
But their variance had expired.
Their variance had expired.
I understand. I just want to make sure that you're indicating that it's a T-zone currently.
Correct.
However, we changed it while they were there.
All right.
Whether there was a variance or not.
And while they didn't have a, of use and occupancy permitted.
Right, that I understand, but I'm sure they will address that.
It's like a non-compete use.
Right.
The other issue is that we're, we're concerned that the, that the T-zone, if this lot, use is allowed to continue, the T-zone will, will not be effective. You will not see the results of the changes you made in the zone change, and there won't be significant change in that area. And the statement calls for a conclusion that the use is okay in the area, so long as it is screened. That's not the issue. It's, it's not a use allowed in the zone, period. And it's, it's not consistent with the San Fernando redevelopment plan, nor the landscape plan which you approved in May of 2004. And the last item is the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance. It says the city of Glendale, the BZA found that the city of Glendale contracts for the removal and storage of abandoned vehicles, which, which must be held and processed per the California Department of Motor Vehicles regulation. Staff's response is that that's irrelevant to the issue at hand, whether or not the city contracts for towing is not relevant to whether the variance will be contrary to the objectives of the zoning ordinance. The towing contract specifies where the disposal lot, disposal lot can be, and in fact, does not pertain to the objectives of the zoning ordinance. The zoning, as we've talked about before, the zoning specifically allows disposal lots to be located in IMU, IMUR, and IND zones. Tow lot, the tow contract also specifies that the disposal lot must be located within one-quarter mile of the city limit, even, even in the applicant's primary and secondary storage lots. So we've given, there's, there's various options that the applicant could have taken, and this does not establish a hardship. Staff recently conducted a brief survey of available properties and found two lots within a quarter mile that can be used for this purpose, and that is shown in your packet as exhibit five. So in conclusion, we do not, staff does not believe that the BZA findings are supportive of other relevant substantial evidence, and, or it was sufficient to support the decision. And that the BZA findings were in substantial error.
I have a question about the T-zone. The T-zone extends from this property up to what, the 134, basically? That's part of it?
Extends throughout the entire city, along the transportation line, the MTA property. So that would be from the city of Los Angeles north to the city of Irving.
Okay, so this particular T-zone, the only thing I, there's this lot, and then we have the day labor center. Between, between the 134 and this property, there's only the day labor center in that particular T-zone, right?
You also have parking lots that are leased to private businesses.
That's right.
Both on the city of Glendale side and western side.
How about other, how about other T-zones in the San Fernando Road? What's happening in those T-zones? Does anything come to mind?
The city transportation terminal, the parking lots associated with it, and I believe some of the land that we've purchased for the bus, or whatever it's going to be called, they're all transportation-type use.
Because it's ironic, this is part of a T-zone. These are the, the bones of, of transportation situations that went horribly wrong, you know, so, anyway.
Are there any specific questions?
Almost done with the appellate's side?
Yes.
Do your second.
Following you up on Mr. Quintero's questions. The other items that are on the T-zone, based on what I saw, was allowed. I'm assuming the parking lots are allowed. I'm assuming that the transportation, you know, center is allowed.
Correct.
The, the transportation, storage is allowed because of the transportation, mass transit. The only one that's the oddball to me that sticks out is the, the day laborer center. Now, does that one have a variance?
Yes, it does.
How long is the variance for?
I'm not sure, since I didn't handle it, but I believe it was 10 years.
And when was that variance granted?
I think in the late 90s, 1996. Center opened in 97.
Early 97.
February of 97, I believe.
So, so the variance on this item has not expired yet?
Correct.
Okay, so consequently, because it has not expired yet, so it...
Just one correction. Mr. Mayor, member council, Yusefian, the standards, setback, and sign variance for the day labor was granted on November 25, 1996, and there's no expiration date for that. It didn't go for a use variance because that use was allowed in the M2 zone previously, the previous zone. So it went for a standards, setback, and the sign variance.
Okay, so it's grandfathered in?
Right.
How about this use? Was this use allowed at the time?
This use was never allowed in the previous zone, which was M2, and it's also not allowed in the new zone, which is the T-zone.
So even in the old days, it was not allowed?
It was not allowed.
The only way to get it is to get a new variance.
Through the use variance, that's correct.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's ground out. Okay, side one done. Side two. Okay, Mr. Gannus, how many hours do you want?
do you own?
I didn't clock when they-
Well, it's been an hour, but that's okay.
I would like to mention to Mr. Gantis that he's one attorney, and we have one, two, three, four, five attorneys against you, not counting Mr. Najarian.
You know, Mr. Mayor Weaver, Councilman Manukian-
I need to comment on that.
And six, you forgot your own city attorney. I could take on 10 attorneys. I'm comfortable with that.
We're gonna find out, aren't we?
Howard wants to clarify something.
Need to make sure the record is clear that my role in this particular case is to provide you with advice. I am not an advocate. The advocacy role and the advisory role are separate. That's why you have attorneys, Stan Myden, Mr. Grant, who may be available to advocate. Advocate, I am the advisor to the council. I am not an advocate, one way or the other. Not to the appellate.
Too bad, Mr. Starbird.
I'm the advisor to the council. I've been kept out of this intentionally.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know something about Mr. Gantis. I think he can hold his own. I've watched him on civil service hearings, and there's sometimes more attorneys in that room than there is in this room today.
Let's let him start trying. Mr. Gantis, go right again.
Thank you. John Gantis, 100 West Broadway, number 600. I represent the appellate in this case. I'm hoping, I don't think I need more than 15 or 20 minutes, and I'm hoping you'll bear with me since-
The appellate is Mr. Starbird.
Pardon me? I understand. When I say the appellate, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm just always used to representing the appellate. So I do not represent the appellate in this case. You know, I think the last point was my first point, and that is that point that Councilman Giuseppe made about the use. This use, number one, has been in use since 1985, and it's been under a month-to-month with the MTA, and it has never been allowed on this piece of property. It's always been the subject of variances. So, and that's why they have a variance. That's why there was a previous variance. There's been talk about violations on this property. The only violations that I know of are the violation that we're there on property that violates the tow contract. So it's kind of like a catch-22. We put that into the tow contract. I want to remind you, August 23 of last year, when we presented our case, when we presented the packet, we presented with, to you, the locations, and this was one of the locations. This is not new to the staff. Obviously, we've been there for 21 years. So to say that there's been a violation, yeah, we violate the tow contract because we are there, because we have always been there, and now are seeking to apply for the variance. I think it was Councilman Manukian, he said, did we do it within the 180 days? We did it before the 180 days. Contract was effective January 1, 2006. Under Mr. Grant's reading, under my reading, it was effective in June because the city manager didn't sign it until June. However, that's another issue. But it is, it was, we applied in September of 2005. I think the issue might come up about the application for the variance. Clearly, we don't deny, the variance expired in January, I believe, of 2003. And it expired because, if you will all, those of you that have been here that long, I know the mayor has been, this went through a six-year process of the RFP. And if you all recall, that even after the six-year process, the staff recommendation was not to award a contract, and you did award us a contract, and we thank you very much for that. So the idea of applying for a variance at that time, we didn't know what we were doing. We didn't know what we would need. We didn't know the needs of the contract. We didn't know the area we were going to be in. So to apply for a variance, which just the fees themselves are between $1,000 and $2,000, not counting my fees, not counting all the work necessary to do that, seemed inappropriate at the time. And indeed, once this council awarded the contract in August of 2005, September of 2005, we applied for the contract. Now, Mr. Grant, and I have to admit, and of course, it's late, so I'm going to keep my calm, indicated that I said that this was a required lot under the contract. I did not say that. In fact, I specifically said it is not a required contract. What I did say is that we need this lot in order to comply with the contract. In order for us to properly service the contract, we need this lot. And that's why we're applying for the variance. Yes, it is a disposal lot. Yes, it is a discretionary lot, but it's something that we believe that we need. They brought up issues regarding the property at 629 Irving, as though somehow that has to do with the variance. I think Mr. or Councilman Giuseppe quite accurately indicated, and I'm going to keep it within the confines of what the variance is, because that's your obligation here. We don't believe we're in violation of anything on 629 Irving. I've had discussions with Mr. Grant. I've sent them a letter regarding that. They have issued a notice of violation. It was issued in the process of this. So we're waiting on this. We've asked for, wait so we can get through this process, and I will go over with that. That property, we've also had for many years, and indeed, we believe we're grandfathered in on that particular piece of property. But those are discussions for later on. So while there may be something issued, we have a clear issue regarding that, and that was addressed before there were any violations issued. Let me address some of what I see as a major issue, and then I'm going to get to the variance findings. The crux of this, and I believe Mr. Starbird in his application quite accurately pointed out, what I see is, are really the two real issues here. The issue is, you've adopted a landscaping plan, and that this use is incompatible with that landscaping plan. But number one, I have some concern that we're putting maybe form over substance. And the form is, we have this glorious plan next to a railroad track, next to the Ralph Storage Center that you see in the background, across the street from auto repair businesses, across the street from IMUR zone, which, by the way, we hear tonight, the contract says we have to be in the IMUR zone, but if we get a property in that zone, we have to apply for a conditional use permit and go through that whole hoop. Because it's not a permitted use, it's only a conditioned use. So somehow, I think that we're putting form over substance. Let me make clear about one thing that we have said. We said at the BZA, and we'll say it again here. We will not interrupt that landscaping program. We have already been advised by the MTA that we must give back seven feet, because that's what the city wants. That's what we're going to do. I think it was Councilman Manukian, there will be 28 feet left, and we can operate in that 28 feet. We've already agreed to do that. We've already agreed to comply with whatever the city needs to do to make its landscaping plan happen. They want covering, we'll put covering. They want more bougainvillas or something in the form of plant covering, we'll give them that. I believe that was in a letter from Tony Maniscalchi that we included in our program, that they don't want cheating. We don't want to be bad neighbors. We've been there for 21 years. Carville Gaye has been in this city for more years than I think I want to even comment upon. Okay? So we're not here to destroy Glendale. We're here to enhance it. But we have to have the opportunity to perform our contract as you've asked us to do. And part of that is to have vehicles, a vehicle storage location. They've called this an inoperable lot. Yes, there have been some inoperable vehicles. Why are inoperable vehicles on this lot? Well, I have a flash for you. We have to tow inoperable vehicles. Those vehicles, every one of those pictures you saw, I'm sitting next to Mr. Gantis. Were you required to tow that? Yes. Were you required to store it? Yes. These are vehicles we're required to tow and store and keep. Sometimes, a long time, if their evidence holds, they get an evidence hold. This is what I'm told. The boat, was that towed? The boat was towed. The motorcycles that were on some of these, were they towed? They were towed. So these are things we're doing to meet the OPTS contract. Let's get to the, so number one on the staff report was the landscaping. We're not going to interrupt that. This use will not interrupt it. Why? It's all going to be behind the landscaping. The exit, if you look on my submission, one of the pictures you saw where the gate is, the gate comes out on Goodwin. It is not an exit directly onto San Fernando. So it's hidden from the public. The pictures they showed you, was that the way the lot looked in that moment in time? Yes, it did look that way. How did those pictures get taken? Either the gate was open, or they climbed the fence, because from San Fernando, you've seen the pictures of the oleanders, and you cannot see or know what's going on in there, only if you go looking inside this gate that goes off of Goodwin, that really is shielded from the public. The second position maintained, and of course, I didn't mark it. Well, I can't pick it up right now. But the clear, the issue of the lease, let's be clear about one thing. We're there, month-to-month. If MTA writes a 30-day notice, we're out of there. We're out of there. If part of the, and this is what's just kind of amazing to me, that we, that they haven't done it. I mean, I don't know why the city doesn't call. MTA, why don't you get them out of there so we can do our thing? Because they can do that. But MTA says, no, stay there. Just give us back seven feet. And we did. Let's go to the findings that need to be made, because that's what everybody emphasized. One of the four lawyers that was here emphasized, and well, he wasn't a lawyer, it was Mr. Cadillac. "The strict application of the ordinance results in practical difficulties inconsistent with the purpose of the ordinance." I know Councilman Giuseppe knows, this language is probably something that I know I slept with for seven years. I don't know how many years he slept with it, because we did BZA work together. There's nothing with this property that will disrupt the ordinance purposes. There's nothing that will, because we are prepared to completely comply with the landscaping. So to apply this ordinance strictly, if you apply it strictly and say, no, we're just going to have the landscaping there, then basically, applying it does disrupt a use that is somewhat consistent. It does park vehicles, and parking lots are allowed, and it can be shielded. So the strict application does indeed cause a hardship. It causes a hardship that is not economic. Mr. Giuseppe is absolutely correct. There's no economics that can enter into this. The landscaping will go forward. The use will be screened from the street in any manner you choose. We're not talking about parkland. Again, we're next to railroads. We're across from auto repairs. This is a neighborhood, and we're going to get to that, because the staff emphasized the idea, the land in the same zone. Read the ordinance. It's land in the same zone or neighborhood. And what's across the street? Auto repair, all sorts of stuff. This is industrial. This is not residential. Exceptional circumstances or conditions are applicable to the property that do not apply to other properties in the same zone or neighborhood. What are those exceptional circumstances? Across the street, we're saying, oh, no, we'll allow auto repair over here, but we're not going to allow this use over here, which we've allowed for 21 years before. This is an exceptional circumstance. We're there, we're using it, and we're saying, we're going to continue to do it upon the terms that you allow, and do not allow us to have this property deprives us of what people have in the same neighborhood, deprives us of what's existing on-street usage, on-street usage with the day laborer center, which I guess if there's no expiration, they're there forever. Again, the property has been used for this purpose, as I've indicated, for over 20 years, as in the neighborhood. Also, we have property, it's not property that's going to disrupt the landscaping because we don't exit on San Fernando. We exit off of Goodwin in an area that's not available. So that's an exception. This property is exceptional. Granting the variance will not be materially affect, or, excuse me, materially affect or be detrimental to the public welfare. This is obvious. How have we, in 21 years, affected the public welfare? And more importantly, how will the continued use, properly screened and maintained, affect the public welfare if, in fact, the landscaping portion, if, in fact, the consistency that this council, or that this council, and more importantly, the staff seeks, is allowed to go forward? It will continue. We are not going to do that. We've agreed to comply as necessary with the SFR plan, and will continue to agree. It is not going to be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance. Mr. Starbird, in his appeal, has indicated that we want to get rid of blight in this area. Okay, that's what the purpose of this ordinance is. Where's the blight? Maintaining a screened yard is blight? I don't call that blight. And more importantly, then where's the blight across the street? Because that's what's across the street, are these repair yards that are really not in the best of condition. I've gone by there. I think it's important to keep in mind that a variance, it's great to have all these legal things. I don't have this PowerPoint presentation for you. I'm sure, sorry. I didn't have four lawyers preparing this for me. But one thing I can tell you is what a variance is there to do, and it is there to allow a use that is exceptional, as it requires. Oh, yes, you have to make the findings. Well, findings are there. The findings are there, and there's facts to back up those findings. And we believe that our continued use and our continued cooperation with the staff warrants the granting of this variance. The BZA heard, you asked about the evidence, the BZA heard. They heard most of the evidence. You were properly advised. They did not, they knew there was a month-to-month lease, so that portion was not new to them. That was presented at that time, and that's why they have it in their findings. And what they didn't see, though, is correct. They didn't get three PowerPoint presentations on why or why not. What they did understand, though, is that the use has been there for this period of time, that it is not disruptive of what this ordinance will do, and that indeed, applying it strictly will cause a hardship. One of the things that was presented to you that I thought was rather interesting, and one of the things we've said, is the availability of property. The contract says you either use the IMU, the IND, or the IMUR. Well, we've heard Ms. Wilkerson indicate that in IMU or IMUR, we still need a conditional use permit. We've been out looking for, they say, well, here's some property in Los Angeles that you can look at, okay? Two of which are more than a quarter-mile out. If you'll recall, we have found some property. Again, more than a quarter-mile outside, we haven't done anything because we analyzed whether or not, in our business terms, we could use that lot for non-Glendale OPTS operations. It couldn't be done. So we couldn't do it. So we have two properties that they give you. They list them, and yet, they're outside a quarter of a mile. The very same thing the staff said, oh, no, you can't do that because that violates the contract. So now we have two other pieces of property in the city of Los Angeles. Let me tell you what the problem with that might be. If there is vandalism at that piece of property, if it's vandalized, and is there vandalism? There is. People climb up, we have crime. Who do you call? You can't call the Ghostbusters. So instead, you've got to call the Los Angeles Police Department, not the Glendale Police Department, because that's not in the city of Glendale. And where is their nearest office? It's probably the one down by the Kmart, the old Kmart, if that's still there, which is a, how many miles away is that? That's probably a fairly good distance, a 20-minute drive for them. At some instances, it's longer. And are they interested in helping out a Glendale OPTS? I don't know the answer. And that seems to me to be at the rub of all of this. Yes, we could if they were available. Do I know about those two pieces of property? I don't. I don't know what their cost is. I don't know what their viability is. I don't know what the city of Los Angeles would require in terms of entitlements, and how long that might take. I'm going to have Mr. Gay comment on it, because he has examined that. But I do know this, that this property is, I don't believe, deserves the attention it's gotten. I think you have the facts to make the four findings, and I encourage you to make those four findings and sustain what I think is a very well-reasoned decision by three members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giuseppe, let's move as much as we can. Go ahead.
Is the side that is facing the railroad track, I have a black and white, I can't see very well. Is the side facing the railroad track fenced?
Yes.
Is it covered?
No.
No, it's not?
It's not covered. No.
Okay.
No, the railroad track side is not covered.
Okay. So every metro link that drives by looks in there. Can you cover it?
I'm sure if that's one of the conditions, we could do that.
Is MTA going to allow you?
Yes.
Well, I think, before you say yes, you better check, because they did not want us to get too close to the rail for trees and so on and so forth, because they don't want leaves and stuff like that in there. So I don't know if you can do that.
Well, these won't be leaves, though, if we put, I mean, I would imagine you'd want, I mean, I expect plastic screening would be appropriate at that location.
The other thing that you said, by the way, you did a very good job of putting this together. The seven years really worked for you. You haven't forgotten anything.
Thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to ask is, you said, if MTA gives you a 30-day notice, you're gone.
Correct.
Where do you go?
Good question. They haven't yet.
They gave you a notice- They gave you a notice, where are you going to go?
Well, I guess we're going to have to find somewhere to go. I mean, I don't know, but it's certainly there. I'm not going to deny that it exists. It's a month-to-month.
And, and you said some of these properties, some of these items over here?
Where's over here?
I mean, in the lot.
Yes.
Are evidence that they have to keep?
Yeah, usually, when you tow an automobile, if there's an evidentiary hold put on that automobile, you have to hold it until there's a cut slip by the police.
But not in here?
I believe, yes, there are. Let, let, I'm going to have Mister Gay, and I don't know the operational answers to those.
Because my understanding was that type of a location has to be in one of those two sites.
To the extent that we can hold them, yes. But if we can't, that then is, that we also are allowed under the contract, I believe, it allows for operable.
Well, wait up, let's finish up.
That's fine.
Mister Yusefian's question first.
I'll, I'll ask those questions because you said that, and then I remember something about the contract, so I want to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mister.
Let me just comment on one other, if I could, I, I know I said, let me just, I want to go to those paragraphs that they've cited, and I cited the 20.12, I believe, Councilman Yusefian. Again, we could not move, we're restricted by, I mean, the language says, you can't move. And if you want to, you've got to go get permission, and of course, we can't move until we get a CUP. This was, I, I guess I wonder why it wasn't brought up in the, this was not part, part of, anytime, wasn't brought up prior to the signing of the contract. All of this was done after the con, well, the variance came up because we applied for it, but clearly, anything else came up after, and clearly, with this lot, it became an issue, and the staff became an issue with it. This wasn't an issue brought up during the contract.
Yeah, but in, in the contract, it specifically says that they have to be located in the zone that is allowed.
It does say that.
It specifically says that, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that, at the time, I know Mister Gay had attorneys, and so did all the other ones, that read that contract up and down every single nook and cranny, and we had to craft some stuff down in here. So in the end of the day, it, it was listed there.
Yes, it was. It was in the RFP also.
And so, that, that's what listed. Now, I understand that there's a section in there that also allows for variances, so, to, to, to the code. And, and so, I think that's the question I have from you. I do have other questions from the zoning administration, which I'll ask later.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Am I through?
You're through, as far as I know.
With regard to the hold.
Mister Najarian.
Just briefly on this point, with regard to evidentiary hold, they, those vehicles must only be stored in the primary storage lot.
Okay.
Not even in the secondary storage lot.
And that's why I said I'll let him answer the operational, I don't know the operational portion of it.
I remember something about that I didn't know was primary or secondary.
I'm trying to get this down to a reasonable timeframe. Mister Gay, how, how much time do you need?
He's out here by midnight.
Unacceptable.
Ten, hopefully 10 minutes, just a matter of clarification.
Everybody else after that, three minutes.
Okay. Mister Mayor and members of the council, I just really would like to clarify a, a few things that have been mentioned here tonight. First of all, the operation, we do not keep impounds in that, in that particular storage lot. That, that lot is what it says. It's a disposal lot. From the other two lots that we have, the primary and the secondary lot, and then the primary lot is where we keep the evidence holds. We just put a brand-new evidence garage in there, which was a requirement of our contract. That turned out very nice, and that's where, where we keep them. What we actually do with that lot on San Fernando Road is, when we get ready for the lien sale, after the lien sales are complete on a lot of the abandoned vehicles, and what you saw in those pictures are exactly what we get off the city streets, we get a call from the police department, we go there, and that's what it is. They want it moved, so we move it. We might take that over to another lot. We do the process of lien, which is required by the Department of Motor Vehicles. We have so many days that we have to hold on to it. We have a bid procedure, in other words, that we have to do according to what the state is, and we will have people that will come and, and bid on those cars that do not get picked up. They're low-value cars. They're not worth a whole lot. Sometimes we get accidents. Sometimes we'll donate cars to the Glendale Fire Department, which we do quite a, quite a bit of. They will take them over to the drill facility and use those for practice, and you probably saw some of those in those pictures. We then call a junkyard, and they come out, and they will bid on the cars, a couple of them. Whoever's the highest bidder, those cars will go to probably pick you apart, or two or three other junkyards. Those, those cars are taken over to that lot on San Fernando Road. They're only there a few days, and then they are picked up by the junkyard. That's what we use that particular lot for. That's why we call it a disposal lot. That's exactly what it's used for. We dispose of the vehicles there. We're certainly not going to put good, brand-new cars in there that are, are worth a lot of money, over $4,000. That's why we have the other two lots, because that lot is probably not the most protected, like the other two lots are. So I can honestly tell you that that lot does have a purpose. It helps us to operate successfully. We have a procedure, and we use that procedure every day that we're in business, and we have for many, many years, and it works out fine.
Let me ask you, then you're saying it's a lot of convenience. It's not necessary for the towing contract, but it is a lot of convenience for you to operate.
Well, no, I wouldn't agree with that. Because there's a lot of times when we'll get cars that are a, a real eyesore, and rather than to leave them on the street and, and waste the space of the other two storage lots, we'll take them down there. You've got to have a place where you're actually going to put the old, unsightly banged-up cars.
Okay, but is, is that a requirement of the Glendale towing contract, that you do that?
No.
Yes or no?
No.
Okay, so it is a convenient location for you to get those cars off the street and hidden away?
Well, if you were in my business, yeah, it is, it is necessary to have it. Yes, I would say so.
Okay, go ahead.
It's, it's a convenience, if you want to say that, but yet, it's, for us, it's a necessity to have it, because we've used it for 20 years.
I'm just saying that we've read the staff reports, say it's not necessary for your contract.
Well, they're not in the towing business, Mayor, okay?
I, I'm not debating that. I'm just saying what the staff report says, it's not necessary for the contract. It is a convenience for you to operate for the last 20, 30 years.
That's correct. It makes the business run a lot smoother, and we have a place to put certain automobiles that we do not want to put in the other storage lots.
Got you.
Okay? Now, just a matter of clarification, as far as storage lots in other cities, years ago, in the 70s, when I was operating as an official police garage, I had two storage lots in the city of Los Angeles, on Brazil Street. Nothing but trouble. City of Los Angeles has more, more permits, they have more requirements, and as Mister Gannis mentioned, if you have a, a, a problem with vandalism or something happens where the law is broken, you call LAPD, you know what? Sometimes they come and sometimes they don't. LAPD's a good department, but you know what? They have more important things to worry about. That's the problem. You call Glendale, it's a Glendale car, you got a complication, believe me. And that's the problems that I had. And also, I was looking at my old files, and I found a letter from Glendale PD, from the staff, telling me that they wanted me to get my storage lots back in Glendale. Get your cars in Glendale. As difficult as it was to find storage lots, and it still is in the city. In fact, that came through, God rest her soul, Marlene Roth, who did my zoning issues for me. And she had done some research, and that was something that came through that the city of Glendale, through the police department, asked us to keep our storage lots in the city of Glendale, because of complications that we had in the city of Los Angeles. That was even mentioned during the RFP negotiations. Anyway, that's just a matter of clarifications. If you have any questions?
Stay around.
I'll be here. Thank you.
And I'm going to go to three minutes unless you really have something to add that is cognizant of, that we need to know, okay? So bear with me on that. Michael Gay, you want to, you've got three minutes to follow that up.
I'm making it short.
Anybody else has got a car, turn it in now, not later.
Michael Gay, gaze. I let, let people know because you're budgeting the time.
It's 10:15.
You're giving up late, and.
We've got a long way to go.
It's not that you're just being grumpy, it's that you're doing a process here.
Well, I am, I'm on Hawaii time, I can tell you that.
Michael Gay, gaze.
Don't let that wear out.
Slightly slimmer, slimmer version.
That's good.
More hair.
More hair, that's good, too.
That actual point, the, the slide was great. That showed how great of a lot that is. Those boats that you saw, most of those boats come with no VIN numbers, no license plates. They can't go to a junkyard. They're hard to move. I don't know if you've driven by that lot, but most of the times you'll drive right by it, you'll never know it's there.
That's right.
It's a great lot. I, I feel that that lot kind of got bypassed in that T-zone. When you guys make those laws, sometimes you don't foresee what's going to get, you know, missed, and I think that lot got missed. It's a great loan. I mean, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great lot. Those boats, we have to get about four or five boats before we crush them up, and then, you know, we get cut slips from the police department. Then we get a big bin and crush them up, and then they, they go to the, you know, to the, to the dump, because they're basically fiberglass wood. Junkyards don't take them, so it's a great yard. Auto shops, body shops, everywhere nearby. You know, I, I feel that, you know, it, it doesn't do the city any injustice to keep it there. It's actually in a great location. It's not on the boulevard, it's off the boulevard. If you drive by it, you'll never know it's there. It's kind of crazy we have all these lawyers here on this one thing. All it takes is five minutes to drive by it, and I, I don't think it's going to make a difference. You've got dirt down the street, you've got railroad tracks. We don't want to talk about what's across the street, but it, you know, it's a great yard.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'd like to point out that since no neighbors appealed this BZA decision, I find it puzzling that the city is appealing it. With all due respect to City Manager Starbird, whom I respect greatly, I'm sure that it is legal that this is being done, but there's something that seems strange about it, and I'm glad that a council member has already pointed out the number of staff people that are speaking tonight against this property owner. This is a historical industrial zone, and it's not like it was a residential neighborhood, but it's changing into an industrial zone so that the people who move there are, are having this use come at them to change the neighborhood. Our city has a population of about 207,000, and I think that we should not only have an industrial zone, but we should value having an industrial zone and cherish our industrial zone, and perhaps it's not my position, I don't have a right to say that because I don't live where this is in my view, but again, San Fernando Road has always been industrial. So I, I hope that you will support the decision of the BZA. Thank you.
Just a comment, you know what really irks me is that when, when the city further up San Fernando Road tears down a dilapidated, crime-ridden apartment building and proposes to replace it with excellent, clean housing for handicapped individuals, that the neighbors come out screaming bloody murder. And something like this flies completely under the radar. So, not to yell at you, Nancy, but just for the public out there, you know who you are, I just find it ironic. Sorry?
You're taking hard turns on that.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, council staff. I don't always agree with Mister Starbird, but I think this is one of those occasions that I have to. Someone has to look out for the community who doesn't really understand the cryptic notations on the council agenda indicating what this is all about. Not too many of the people understand that there's a junkyard at this address on San Fernando Road. Now, one of the things you've heard me talk about here before is accountability, and Mister Gay, with his position on the Transportation and Parking Commission, has been sort of, oh, pushing the limits. If you looked at his statement of economic interest, it wasn't really complete. He didn't indicate the things that he needed to indicate as to the ownership or leasing or leasehold interest on his various businesses. Now, we've seen from the chart from both staff and for the, the appellate's council that this particular issue is one that, it is a lot of convenience. The, he has a primary and a secondary lot, and this lot totally isn't necessary. It's sure, it's a good thing for him, but it's a bad thing for the community when we're trying to clean up the T-zone and work with MTA to make this a more of a viable landscaped particular area. So I think we really ought to get rid of this salvage yard, this junkyard, and I think that the, what we heard from Edith Fuentes regarding the, the issues that were involved and the claims, I think that in the findings that were necessary, I don't think that those findings were made. And I think that you're also looking at an issue where there have been several years, and I, actually, it's probably the city's fault for not taking action earlier on the violations of the variance and the lack of variance. So maybe the city should look to that, but by the same token, I think that the, this council should look seriously at what Mister Starbird has presented as the appellate in this particular thing, issue, and not to grant the variance and to reverse the BZA. I would suggest you reverse the BZA, BZA, and I would thank you very much. I'm Barry Otten for Vanguard.
Rick Barnes?
Mister Gay wasn't involved in this Asia, up to my knowledge, unless he went to it.
Good morning. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, city councilmen, staff. I actually am torn on this one because I really like what we're doing on, on San Fernando Road and seeing the pieces go together. And as a, as a neighbor and as an individual that markets real estate and represents clients, I see this being a help. And that's where I'm torn is because over the last six years prior to this going together, I helped Mister Gay buy the 629 vacant lot from being a lease into a purchase. I have been out there looking for properties, and I can't go to economics because it's not allowed, but economically, his business has to run on economics, unlike the city's deep pockets. Some of these businesses have to live on what their income structure is. And so when I've gone out to look at lots, the problem we have is getting a lot that fits economically, one. Two, I'm amazed at how many owners do not want the use of a junkyard or tow yard on their facilities, and they're all very concerned with oil and, and different environmental problems. So we have submitted, I have submitted personally a number of offers on properties for Mister Gay. We had one that was just outside of Glendale into Burbank that would have been a very nice lot, but we were, it was outside the quarter mile, and there was no way to lock it down, and it was actually very economically set for, for the tow company. Since then, I look, and I know right now that one of the things that we've done is if this lot, at some point, we know it's on a 30-day notice, he's actually has me constantly looking. Every time we hear about a piece of property, we go out, check it out, make certain, what are the economics? Can we... Can we lease it? Can we buy it? What can we do with it? So it's not as if he's sitting there going, "I'm not interested." He is interested. And at the same time, knowing that when we did go to the BZD, that it's something that has to be dealt with in the future, whether it's today or tomorrow. And at this point, if you guys have two lots... I give my business card to your staff. They can call me. I will go do the running for it. That's not a problem. The problem is trying to find a piece of property that economically fits a tow company. Not a construction company, not an industrial company that's making a lot of money. It has to have some kind of economic effect. And so anyway, I certainly vote for going into number two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes? Could somebody give this to Mr. Barnes, please? I don't know if he has that or not. You said give some phone numbers? They have... You have them now.
Annette Ohan-Kanian, followed by Art Devine, and that's it.
Good evening. My name is Annette Ohan-Kanian with Board of Zoning Appeals. At the May 15, 2006 Board of Zoning Appeals, I was the minority vote, and I voted to deny the variance because the applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate all the findings. And based on the evidence that was presented, the fourth findings were not made. Justifiable hardship was not demonstrated because under the police tow contract, a third disposal lot was not required. And the fact that the applicant allowed the variance to expire since January of 2003 instead of securing another location was not considered a justifiable hardship, but self-imposed and financial hardship also is not a consideration in granting variances. Exceptional circumstances were not shown. The lot is located in T-zone where no one is permitted to store inoperable vehicles. Therefore, this type of use is not permitted in this zone anyway. Granting of variance would be materially detrimental because the use would be in direct conflict with the San Fernando Corridor redevelopment plan. And granting of this variance would perpetuate the non-conforming use. Also, the fourth finding was not made because the proposed use was not compatible with the rezoning program to the T-zone to accommodate transit. And the city attorney's office indicated that destroyed vehicles and prohibited materials were being stored, which was in violation of one of the conditions of the January 2001 variance. And also, they indicated that there was pending case on that property. Therefore, based on the evidence that was presented, I was not able to make the findings, and I denied granting of the variance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that comment. What type of materials were being stored?
Prohibited.
I'm sorry?
Prohibited material.
Like, what are we talking about?
There were some photos of destroyed vehicles, the boat, the... There was something else. It was listed at the BZA meeting by the city attorney's office with the photos.
Good, thank you. Art Devine?
I think it was the forklifts specifically that was noted at BZA.
It's prohibited?
Prohibited, according to the conditions of the approval.
And that was the condition of the 2000...
Variance.
2001 variance that was granted as part of the conditions, I guess.
Well, let me... I have a question on that. It's prohibited. How do you move vehicles around? How do you move other...
You take it from the yard down there.
Without... Well, within the yard, without a forklift, how exactly does he run his business?
Councilman Quintero Paulerly, Assistant City Attorney. That was where I came into play with the original code enforcement case, that the property was, well, at the time, didn't have any variance when I became involved in 2005. But even the prior variance that was granted, prohibited totally destroyed vehicles, forklifts, automobile parts, trailers, and the like. And that's the disposal lot that's being claimed to have been used for 21 years, has actually been used in violation even of the variance at that time. So you don't need a forklift to move around operable vehicles. But the 2001 variance prohibited destroyed vehicles as well as forklifts and trailers. But if... Boats.
They're not destroying them.
If a vehicle is inoperable on the streets and they pick it up, where do they put it?
Well, I assume that's what the other lot was for. I was only addressing the conditions of the variance. As a code enforcement attorney, I'm not presenting or advocating whether or not this should be granted or denied. Frankly, it's of little to no consequence to me. What I care about is whatever route is decided here, that the applicant complies with the terms of that variance, or if no variance is granted, that he vacate the use of the property, which is something that I've been dealing with since his variance expired in 2003.
Thank you. Art Devine? I know you asked eight minutes, but can't you summarize a question, Matt?
I will try, but I have some new information that the council has not heard.
You have some new information?
That the council has not heard. And if you want me to stop, you stop me whenever you want.
Oh, you've got new information that we haven't heard in the last two hours. Your guest.
Okay. Ordinarily, I would just give my feelings or rationale on the decision that the BZA made. By the way, I'm Art Devine, I'm a member of the BZA. I was one of the majority members. There were three votes for it, one vote against it, and one abstention. Ordinarily, I would just give you my thoughts on the reason for my actions or the board's actions. However, in this case, I have serious concerns about how this case has been presented to the council. And in reading the reports that have come to you and the various minutes and whatnot, I found that there were statements in there made by staff that have raised serious questions about the competence and the propriety of the BZA's actions. And I have great concern about that, and I wanted to clarify that before I get into talking about why the board took its action. First of all, I tried to resolve these issues before this came to council. When the initial appeal came out from the city manager's office, I read it. I found many things that I felt were not right. And I met with the city attorney, I met with the planning director, I met with the zoning administrator to try and indicate what my concerns were and how I thought things should be changed to more accurately reflect what the BZA did. All those meetings, I presented them written documentation. I changed things to show how I thought the BZA acted. And apparently, they were all ignored because the reports that went to you did not reflect any of these concerns. My concerns deal, first of all, are with three items. The minutes that you have in front of you, the staff appeal that you have in front of you, and the staff report that you have in front of you. Now, the minutes, when they came out initially from the BZA, I found many errors in them, and I found that they did not reflect what the BZA did. And I brought that to the attention of the planning, actually, to the zoning administrator. And that was a number of, well, actually, two months ago, right after they came out. And when I saw the minutes reflected again in the report that came to you, I saw the changes weren't made. I then talked to the planning director and gave her the same information I gave the zoning administrator. And lo and behold, tonight, I was handed revised minutes that in fact do partially reflect, or more accurately reflect, what the BZA did. Also, it was interesting to note that the presentation by Mr. Cadlec, I don't see him anymore, where he went through the minutes and the findings of the BZA were based on the incorrect and the minutes that were subsequently changed. So what he presented to you in regards to how the BZA did not make the findings did not come from minutes that actually reflected what the BZA did. Going through the staff appeal, item number two says, "You contend that the board, commission, or officer exceeded authority by virtue of any of the provisions given by law in answer to B." And they answered yes. And they said, "The board exceeded its authority because findings for granting the use and standards variance set forth in the GMC section so-and-so cannot be made and were not made by the board." And that is not true. The findings were made by the board. And the point of contention is that the staff believes that there was not substantial evidence to support the findings. And that's a very subjective decision. This board or this council can find that the findings were substantial and the evidence was substantial, or it can't. And so when the staff says that the findings were not made, that is not true. We did make four findings, and they believe that we did not have substantial evidence to support those findings. But that's a subjective decision. Also, when they say in the same section that findings cannot be made, I pointed out to the city attorney several months ago, or when this report came out, that that's a very dangerous statement to make. Because depending on how this council acts tonight, you can find, you can grant the variance and direct the city attorney to make the findings. So when they say the findings cannot be made, again, I put doubt in that because you can go either way. And the findings can be made if council decides they want to make the findings. Item number three says, "You contend that the board, commission, or officer failed to fulfill a mandatory duty by any provision of law given in answer to 1B." They answered yes. And they indicated that the board failed to make the variance findings set forth in the code necessary to grant the applicant's requested variance. And as I just mentioned before, we did make the findings. And again, the point of contention is, was the evidence that we used to make the findings substantial? That's a decision this council has to make. Says, "In addition, the board failed to fully take into consideration the applicant's ongoing code violations on the subject property as presented to the board by city staff on May 15." That is not true. We did not fail. In fact, we discussed these ongoing code violations at considerable length. We listened to what was given to us by staff, and based on what we heard, we conditioned our approval on these violations being corrected. So if you read the conditions in the decision we made, you'll find that we did not fail to take into consideration the ongoing code violations. We considered them, and we mitigated them by putting conditions in there to take care of them. Says, "You contend that the board, commission, or officer refused to hear or consider certain facts before rendering its decision." The answer to that was yes. It said, "The board failed to consider the fact that the applicant has been operating illegally without use and standards variance since January 18, 2003." That is not true. A board member, Burke, questioned this, questioned both staff and the applicant extensively on this situation where there was a three-year period between the time the variance expired and when he applied for the new one. We considered that, we talked about it, and the conclusion was, and the reason we chose not to penalize him for that, was the fact that was brought out that there was a three-year period in there where you were doing an RFP, negotiating whether or not he was going to get the contract. And the applicant very eloquently stated that during that time, he couldn't make a decision on whether to file an appeal or not file an appeal or renew it because he didn't know what council was going to do and whether he'd get the contract. So again, when staff says, "We refuse to consider certain facts," and they cite that as a fact we did consider, that is not true. It says, "The board appears to have overlooked the fact that the applicant continues to store totally destroyed vehicles, spare parts, forklifts, and other equipment or junk on the subject property as specifically prohibited by code." That is not true. We listened, again, to staff about those conditions. We saw the pictures. And in our action, we took that into consideration and made conditions that those things would be eliminated, and the applicant agreed to do it. So we did not fail to take care of that particular item. Then it says, "In addition, the board did not consider the continued use of the subject property as a disposal yard as incompatible with the city's planned landscape beautification of this area." And I find this particularly offensive because prior to the hearing, when I first got the package on this, I went and met with staff from GRA, Mr. Cadlec. I had a half-hour meeting with him, and my concern with this appeal was twofold. One, the implication and the impact on the landscaping. And two, the implication and the impact on the zoning considerations. I wanted to find out what the true feelings were of the city regarding the landscaping and how the storage yard would impact that. In talking with Mr. Cadlec in his office, I asked him if the... What would need to be done in order for them to complete their landscaping project without the storage yard being a detriment to the project? And he said that as long as they got their... He said they needed 10 feet, but they already had three feet, so it turned out to be seven feet. He says, "If they... We had that, and we could do our landscaping and get that completed without any impairment from the storage yard, GRA would not have a problem with the variance." They said... He did say that... It only spoke to the landscaping. He said that there were considerations on the use part of it, but that wasn't in his purview. I told Mr. Cadlec that I would be asking him the same questions at the hearing so that he would not be blindsided or surprised or have to think about his answer when it came before BZA. And in fact, when it came before BZA, I asked the same question, and he again testified that if they had the footage needed to put in the landscaping, that this project would not be a detriment to the GRA. Finally, it says, "Do you contend that you have any new evidence of material facts not previously presented, which if considered, should change the act, determination, or ruling?" And the answer to that was yes. And I find that to be one of the few true statements in this report to you. Ms. Stanmiden spoke about, or answered to Mr. Josephian's question about what new things were presented tonight that the BZA didn't have. She didn't mention this particular item that was listed here in the staff's appeal report. But this presented a new piece of evidence which the board did not know about. And I'll read the paragraph because it's very important, and it's going to have a bearing on what I'm going to tell you next about my decision on this case. Again, they're talking about new material. And it says, "During the August 23, 2005 city council hearing on the award of the Glendale Police Tow Contracts, the applicant was asked by a city councilman about his towing operations and responsibilities under the city's police tow contract. The applicant was asked to specify the location of his primary and secondary storage lots, and if his pending towing contract was awarded, would the lot on San Fernando Road be necessary to his operation under the contract? And the applicant said, 'No, the lot was not necessary to his operation under the contract.'" And when I read that, that was new information to me. And in my mind, if this statement is true... And again, I'm questioning a lot of the things in this report to you based on what I've just read to you and the doubts that have raised. But if this is a true statement made by staff and is a true reflection of what Mr. Gay said when he was awarded the contract, that the applicant said, "No, the lot was not necessary to his operation under the contract," that would change my decision in terms of finding hardship. Because part of my decision in finding hardship was that the lot was necessary as brought out to you by previous testimony. If this is a contradiction to that, then I would have a problem making the hardship finding on that. But again, I don't know if this is true. So that, in essence, is my concern about the material that was presented to you. In terms of the rationale that three of the board members had, we felt we made the findings. Whether or not there was substantial evidence to support those, again, that's a decision council has to make. We believe there was. We believe that the landscape issue was resolved. We believe that the illegal storage issue was resolved. And we believe that just from a sight standpoint, when you drive by there, and I think Mr. or Mayor Weaver mentioned that earlier... or Mayor Weaver mentioned that earlier, that you cannot see this site, you cannot see the storage material from the street. It's totally shielded. And our conditions that the BZA placed on it would require the same visual shielding to be in place if the variance was granted. So in essence, nothing would change in terms of what you can see when you drive by this site. And with that, I will say, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, some questions. Mr. Josephian.
You said at the time that you, your three of you put conditions as part of the findings that you made-
Correct.
-to deal with some of the issues that apparently the applicant had had with code enforcement issues. Were some of the same conditions present on the previous CUP?
Yes.
Okay. And so, a very simple question, logical connection will be, if a CUP was granted in the past and the conditions was violated, what did you think that if you put the same conditions there, that would change?
Well, that's a very good question, and my answer to that is that if those same conditions are there from a previous CUP, or previous variance, to my way of thinking, that's a code enforcement problem. And if the city, over the 21 years, or 15 years, or however many years it existed, has not chosen to enforce it, or mitigate those things, that, to me, is an enforcement problem. And all I-
Also part of, part of our problem. At the end of the day, code enforcement is part of the city. At the end of the day, the zoning administrator makes a decision to grant a variance with conditions. Conditions are not followed. So what does a zoning administrator, or even the BZA's, recourse is to remove the variance? Correct?
That's right. Relegation hearing.
And, and do a revocation and remove it. At the time, after all of these things happened, their variance was basically expiring. So there was no reason to have a revocation hearing, because it's already expired. So the logical thing to me would be is, it's expired. There is no reason for you to grant a variance and then put the same conditions, knowing the history of the applicant, to go back and revoke it later.
Well, that's, that's a-
Would that be a logical conclusion?
That's a logical thing, but it's making an assumption, an assumption that the owner will not get the message, and that the owner-
Well, apparently, didn't get the message.
Well, I, I think the message is loud and clear at this point. And while your statement is very logical, and I agree with it, my belief is that the message was loud and clear.
Let me go back to one other item. Now, the other item is, was there ever any evidence presented at the hearing that you guys had to also consider the fact that all these vehicles are stored on a dirt lot, and they are subject to open rain, which basically causes all the hazardous chemicals of the engines that are all smashed and everything else to come out, and seep into the ground, end up in our water system? Did anybody talk about that aspect of it?
They did not.
They did not?
Staff did not bring that up, and the applicant did not bring that up.
Okay. Would you consider that to be detrimental to the public?
The way you-
As part of your, part of your findings?
The way you described it, I would say, or the scenario you described, I would say, yes, it would be detrimental. Whether that happens, in fact, I don't know. There's been no evidence to me, or shown to me, that that does happen. I don't know if the engines that they have in there are drained of the chemicals or the oils. So without knowing the full story, and how-
But the staff did not bring those information to you.
They did not bring that up. That was not a concern of the staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Menucha.
Is that the last card?
That was the last, there's the rebuttal. Forgot that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Can we put some time on that, this one?
You want to put it on the city manager? Okay. How about two minutes? Or do you want five, or 10?
No, 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 five, man, that's enough.
One? Do I hear another number?
Jim, five.
Gillian says she can do it in three to five.
Gillian can talk faster than anything I know.
Three to five. We'll see where it goes. I'm not going to rely on you too much to just-
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, members of the Council. I'm just here very quickly to indicate that the question is whether the facts support the findings, and was the analytical gap between those facts bridged in order for the, the conclusion to be reached? Quickly through some points. Concerning the use since 1985, one of the considerations that we need always make is that the prior granting of a variance has no conclusive effect on the subsequent consideration that's pursuant to the Steiger case. So changed circumstances have, have to be taken into consideration in looking at each new variance application. Violations are relevant in terms of the finding of whether or not there's a material detriment to the public welfare. So those are relevant and need to be taken into consideration. Whether or not the applicant was in the six-year process of going through an RFP is not relevant. It does not excuse compliance with the code on a general basis, nor do the needs of the contract abrogate the need for anyone to comply with the underlying zoning requirements. Therefore, that's not relevant to this, to this matter. Neither is the discussion of 629 Irving. In terms of landscape plan, that's only one of the factors to be taken into consideration and having to do with the, the issue of whether or not the zoning is being implemented. Landscape plan is part of the redevelopment plan. The performance of the contract, whether or not that was required or, or not, is really not relevant. Since this is an economic issue, let's remember to keep that in perspective. The moment-in-time photos are relevant. Again, that goes to revealing whether or not code violations exist on an ongoing or consistent basis on the property. That goes to the finding of whether or not there is a material detriment to the public welfare. There was a mention of the lease. We've discussed that. That's an economic issue. And it isn't about the landscaping plan exclusively, as I mentioned. Again, it's a district of the, it is a, a project in the, in the GRA. It goes to the implementation of the plans, including the zoning, which was changed in order to further implement the redevelopment goals in that area. The question of exceptional circumstances is very important when we look at that finding, because the exceptional circumstances aren't meant to create a special privilege. It's so that, according to the purpose of the zoning, that you don't give, create a special privilege for one, but one is able to enjoy the same privileges enjoyed by others in the zone. So that's what we need to keep in mind when we're looking at and examining the sufficiency of findings. Public welfare. The issue of whether or not the site is attractive is not really relevant. I had a slide up on the Arinda case where the court dismissed findings that were based on whether it was attractive, whether there was economic hardship. We need to remember to keep that in mind legally in terms of sufficiency of findings. Blight. There was a question of whether or not this site is in fact blighted, or others in other zones are. Well, in redevelopment, what we look at is whether a site is underutilized in the zone, or whether the use is there is inconsistent with the underlying zoning. That would be part of the, the legal definition of blight. We also look at substandard conditions, code enforcement issues, and whether or not the rents are market rate or not. So those are factors we need to take into consideration when we, when we examine blight. Here, we've got below-market rent, we have substandard conditions, we've got a used citizen inconsistent with the zone. Those are traditional factors that we take into consideration in the legal definition of blight. Availability of property is not really a relevant issue, only presented as information for the purposes of establishing that if property is out there, and that on an ongoing basis, as was indicated by Mr. Barnes, they are looking at it. To go to one last issue, and then I'm done, again, to reiterate, findings are what need to be made. All the facts need to be taken into consideration. If there are facts that have been presented on the record, those need to be a part of the analysis that is made for the conclusion that is reached. If the facts that are presented don't support that conclusion after the analysis and the deliberation is, is conducted, at that point in time, whether those findings can be made in one particular way or the other, has to show that that, that gap has been breached based on the analysis that was made. And that's the concern that staff sees in the findings that were made. Of course, I'm available for, to answer any questions, or as is other staff members that are here. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Menucha.
Yes. I have a couple of questions for staff before I go on with my very short comments. Outside of the variance on this property, are there any other code issues with this
The code issues are somewhat directly related to the variance conditions, such as-
So if we, so if we approve the variance based on some conditions, and they, and they, and they're okay with those, or they comply to, to the conditions, then it's okay? They, they don't have code issue at that point?
It would depend on what was specifically listed in the variance. For example, the storage of junk and debris might not be compatible with the, a vehicle storage lot. So unless that, a particular variance was granted for that-
Right. And they have to comply with the conditions that are-
Whatever other zoning codes-
Right. As long as they're complying with the conditions-
Landscaping.
They don't have, they don't have a code issue on this property. Is that correct?
All of the conditions in the prior variance-
Well, we haven't approved any conditions yet. I'm just saying.
Probably need to divide it into two questions. One, are there any current code violations outside of the conditions of the variance now?
Well, they don't have a variance now.
And number two is, if you do grant a variance, there will be conditions. Those conditions could be the basis for code violations, as well as depending on, let's say, they remove landscaping, or something else that may be outside of variance.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, if they're complying with the conditions of the variance that might, or might not be, let's say it's granted today, then they don't have any code violations that we are not addressing so far today. That's what I'm getting at.
I understand.
Okay.
As, as long as the property is properly maintained, fences remain, that have been disrepaired-
Those are the conditions you're going over.
Oh, no, they're actually code requirements as well.
Okay.
They're code requirements that the original variance put as conditions, that you have to specifically comply with those code requirements. That the use does not, the use variance does not abrogate those-
The original variance is not active anymore. It's irrelevant.
Right. So it depends on what, if anything, is imposed tonight.
My other question is, on his other properties, does he have any code issues?
Not that have yet been referred to the city attorney's office. I will, I'll, I'll speak to those issues.
You know, these things are falling apart.
Okay, Mr. Engel, your turn. Mr. Starbird, one, Mr. Menucha.
Mayor Weaver, members of the city council. First off, I want to preface my answer by saying, we were, we have a code enforcement case on the property on San Fernando Road. There has been ongoing administrative issues in addressing the police contract for several years that the council resolved this year. It has always been the policy of this city council that we take very seriously in Neighborhood Services, that we do not mix, that there's a firewall between some of these things. And quite honestly-
Some of what things?
Between your contract negotiations with your contractors, and using code enforcement to facilitate that. We don't do that in Glendale. We don't do that in Neighborhood Services. Couple other things that come up real quickly. There are issues that came up that have emerged, that once this is decided, however it's decided, we are going to then pursue. I can't answer what those are, I don't, because I did not want to, I wanted to make sure that we were-
I want you to answer my question. My question is, are there any code issues on these other two lots?
Yes.
And what are they? And how many?
And I do not know that, because tonight's issue was exclusively about the San Fernando Road policy, or property. And I wanted to make sure that we did not blend the two, because it gives-
Let, let, I want to blend the two. So I want to know-
I think it's, yeah.
You can't.
Legally, you can't.
It's not, and I-
Well, I, that's a question I, I-
Okay.
Do you know how many? Do you know, you're not telling us, or?
I'm not deliberately trying to withhold. I do not have the file with you. There's an issue with the location of one of the perimeter walls on the Irving property. There's some issue with the landscaping, and my understanding, this is my recollection, at 10:30 at night, not having the file in front of me-
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock. That there's an issue with one of the gates and a permit. That's a-
That, that's what I want to know.
Okay. Those can be remedied.
How long would it take for them to remedy those situations?
But those are irrelevant to this. Those are irrelevant to this property.
No, but I want to know for my own personal thing.
Right.
How long would it take for them?
A short time.
30 days?
Conceivably 30 days.
Yeah, if, if they're true.
There are conceivably additional violations on the San Fernando Road property. My biggest concern at this point would be the requirement for paving on any parking lot, whether it's served for inoperable vehicles. That emerged tonight as a part of this discussion. I have to go back, and certainly, whatever you do, we will work with them on that.
Okay. The, the reason why I'm asking that is-
Can't pave?
I'm, I'm willing to go along with the, with the variance, just so everyone knows. However, the conditions-
Well, please.
The conditions-
Later, later. Those issues are irrelevant to the issue here tonight.
The conditions that were approved by the BZA would, I would, I would emphasize on plus, I would add conditions to that. And one of them would be to allow the landscaping for the MTA. The second one, are the code issues on this and the other properties? And giving the applicant 30 days to resolve all his code issues, otherwise, the variance would not go into effect. It's much tighter than just saying that you have to comply with all the code issues. There's a time limit. If you don't comply with the code issues on all your properties, the variance will not go into effect, and you will, it will basically go away. I don't know if that's doable, but, but I think, I would like, I would like some sort of, I guess, legal opinion on that. The third one is the environmental issues that were brought up today. And that's, okay, hold on a minute.
Wait a minute, I, I got three people that want to talk at one time now. Have a seat. Your turn.
That's the environmental issues that I'm concerned about, and that's the oil, or radiator, or whatever, and that could be leaking into, into a-
Groundwater.
Into the groundwater. And we've gone through, and it, I understand it's a small area, but we've gone through quite a bit to deal with some of the issues in the groundwater. And I don't want to see one more entity or a business that, that increases the particulars in, in the groundwater. So that's, that's another condition that I would like to add on there. Now, you can all tell me how wrong I was.
Now, Mr. Howard, step in to answer that comment, then Mr. Starbird, then Mr. Kadlec.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would recommend against trying to grant a variance with a condition precedent, that code violations be cured. Here's the problem with that. Code violations can be disputed. They are, can be mixed questions of law and fact. There could be legal issues involving whether or not-
What if he agrees to it, then?
Well, if there are, we don't know, for example, Mr. Engel couldn't tell you what all the code violations were. I, again, I would strongly recommend that you, that you stay away from that. There's a question of relevancy on the other properties, but even without that, you've got questions of whether that, those are legally cognizable. They may be disputed, both factually and legally. To get them resolved within 30 days, assuming they want to object to any code violations, that could take a, a process through the courts that may take us months. And it would be inappropriate, in my view, to, to condition this variance on compliance with those code provisions as a condition precedent. Certainly, you can put in obey all laws and comply with all provisions of the code.
But that's, that's too generic. It doesn't, it, I mean-
It can be used-
We're back to going to court and trying to-
Well, actually, you're back to potentially administrative, well, and court. With or without that condition precedent, you would still be back in court.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, my, my concern is for him to comply with all the code-
Understood.
-issues, and to, to do it tight enough where we don't have to go to our attorneys or anything, it will automatically trigger something that if he doesn't comply with it, it's-
The only thing it could automatically, the only thing it could really legally automatically trigger is a revocation proceeding, if you were going to grant the variance. If you were going to deny the variance without pressure to take a revival-
What if we grant the variance in 30 days, and say, come back with a code, with all the, all your outstanding code violations, come back with, with having them be in compliance with city codes, then we'll grant the variance.
And what you could do is, one, if you were to grant the variance, you'd essentially adopt a motion to direct us to prepare findings in support of that, and it generally takes, it takes two weeks, by code, to provide that. You could continue it with the approval of the applicant to a later date, 30 days. Otherwise, we bring it back pursuant to the municipal code within two weeks, 15 days. You can continue it for 30 days, and with the strong admonition that-
Right. Right.
-any outstanding code violations be resolved.
Right. I would be-
And you may or may not adopt the findings.
I would be willing to do that.
Now, Mr. Howard, a question for you. While he was talking, he was thinking. We closed the public hearing. We're talking. The appellant wants to talk, and one of the other appellants wants to talk. Since I closed it, and we're in deliberation now, do I exclude these two people?
Which two people?
The appellant and the staff.
Mr. Starbird and Mr. Cadillac. They both want to speak now.
You can exclude whoever you like, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing is closed.
No, no, no. If I open it for them, then don't I have to open it for the other two?
I would agree that you would because they would have an opportunity to rebut, depending on what is said. I don't know if there's any clarification. It's within your discretion to indicate to Mr. Starbird as the appellant, that if he's speaking as an appellant-
No, he's not going to the back room.
Oh, please.
Well, okay, I'll try this one on for size, Mr.-
But if there's-
Is there an appellate?
Actually, I wasn't going to add to the appellant's case, only making an observation about the first point Mr. Menucha made, which was about conditions, and he referenced junk, et cetera. My point was going to be, if the council's inclined to grant the variance, we should at some point spend some time on conditions because, for example, you've heard this evening from Mr. Gay that this is a disposal yard. That could be inconsistent with some broad definition that there shall not be storage of junk, et cetera, because some could view that as junk. So, I think those are the kinds of issues you should come to grips with if indeed the council's inclined to grant the variance. Again, rolling back into my manager position, I was just trying to give some clarification on that.
Mr. DeSafio.
Okay. You're done?
Yes.
Okay. I think the issue that Mr. Menucha raised about environmental issues, the way to resolve that issue is you have to pave it to keep it from going into the ground. You can't pave that area, and that's what Mr. Cadillac was shaking his head because MTA is not going to let you pave that area for that much of a distance because it goes too far out. So, consequently, you're going to have that issue. And I had a question. Can I ask a question from the zoning administrator? Is that a fair game?
Go ahead.
Okay. Zoning administrator. What were the conditions? Actually, this is kind of awkward as I was going through. There was an application in 1988.
That's correct.
You granted the variance from 1989 to 1999. That's a 10-year period.
That's correct.
Okay. Which means generally, when people get longer terms, you know, it's something that's going on, the use is so on and so forth. Then, from 1999 to 2004, the timeline was kind of reduced.
Correct.
What was the reasoning behind reduction of that timeline to a point that expiration date was on October 1st of 2002?
The reasoning behind that, when the hearing officer granted a shorter period of time, is this granting was not intended to be a permanent approval or for the use to remain there permanently. So, that's one of the reasons they granted a short, she granted a shorter amount of time, and also knowing the fact that redevelopment is already going through this landscape approval process, and we are going also through the process of rezoning the area.
So, because the zone change took about 12 years.
That's correct.
So, there was, so the staff knew-
We knew.
This was getting close to that point.
Exactly. And there was no intention to make it a permanent use in the area.
And what were, because I don't have the old variance in front of me, the use variance, what were some of the conditions?
There's one condition that I wanted to specifically mention. Condition number two of the last variance restricted the use to storage of bona fide vehicles impounded by the Glendale Police Department. And it says, totally destroyed vehicles, spare parts, forklifts, and other equipment or junk are prohibited on this site. So, that's one of the conditions. Also, that the existing landscaping on-site shall be maintained at all times.
Okay.
That the chain link fence post shall be readjusted, and any damaged areas of the fabric shall be replaced with a new fabric.
And that was done in what year?
That was the-
That was done in-
2001.
In 2001.
January 18, 2001.
In 2001. And in 2001, when you granted that variance and you put those conditions in, was those conditions met?
My recollection is there was continuing problems as far as code enforcement and meeting the conditions. That's why-
Did they meet any of these conditions? Because I see the same exact conditions today that the BZI granted.
No, there's no forklift in here.
Well, that's in the code.
There was in the picture. In the picture shown at the BZI hearing, that was one of the issues we showed in the-
I saw two forklifts in the pictures, by the way.
Right. Forklifts and-
I don't know, one of them was working, I guess.
Destroyed vehicles.
I don't know if it's working or not. Okay. But the fact is that all those conditions still remain. The torn fabric remains. The fence, the post has not been adjusted because it's also in the new condition in here, unless that has been done. And based in these pictures that we saw, when was this taken?
Most of those were May of '05.
May of 2005.
2005.
Or two-
2006.
There were two sets of photos, if you look at-
Paul, we need you down here.
I believe there's two different sets of photos with two different dates, and they-
I don't have dates in here.
One of the sets is a timestamp at the bottom.
All I have is the times. I have 9/13. It says 15/9/13.
And I don't have which one is which dates in front of me. We put it into the BZI hearing because we looked it up at that time, but they are a year apart, May of '05 and May of '06. And the different sets, you can tell because one set has a timestamp at the bottom and the other does not.
Okay. Okay. But the ones that show the wrecks and all that stuff-
The only honors is the only guide you've got.
Right. So, okay. Now, you would, and I'm done with her, and I want to ask a question from you. What were from 2000 that they got their variance?
In 2001.
Right, 2001. When did you get involved?
The case was referred to me in, I can't tell you exactly. It looks like June 29th, 2005.
Okay.
It was referred to me from Neighborhood Services.
In 2005?
Yes. The current case.
You got this in 2005?
Yes.
And in your case that you have, that they gave you, does it show when they started enforcing-
Yes.
-of the issues that had come up?
When Neighborhood Services initiated their case?
Yes.
Yes.
Original initiation.
I can give you that.
I just want him on par with record.
Yeah. Looks like April 14th, 2005 was, or April 6th, 2005 was their first inspection of the property, and subsequent to that was their first letter on April 14th.
May I clarify that?
Yes.
Councilmember, are you talking about the very first time Neighborhood Services was involved? Because I know in the record of the report, there's a May 29th letter in 2000 about violations of continued operation of inoperable vehicle storage.
That's what I'm looking for.
We'll need to speak with Mr. Engel about prior administrative cases.